All stand for the pledge of allegiance. Today is City Council Meeting, 1110 Houston Street, Laredo, Texas, Monday, December 4, 2023, 5:35 PM. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All in silence, please. Thank you, may be seated. Roll call, Mr. Secretary, please.
Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert Gonzalez. Councilmember Daisy Campos Rodriguez. Councilmember Melissa Cigarroa. Councilmember Alberto Torres Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Councilmember David, Dr. David Tyler King.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Perez. Councilmember Alyssa Cigarroa.
Hi, Ken.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. And I'd like to put my item 62A123.
The vote.
Motion.
Mayor, may I ask for an amendment? Could you please also bring up item 1A on the supplemental agenda as well?
As amended.
Motion is amended.
Anything else, Councilor?
If you could amend, adding G1 to it as well, please.
G1, I'm sorry?
G1.
As amended.
Motion is amended.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, I'm joking. As amended.
As, motion is amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. All right. We'll start with 63A1. Discussion with possible action on status and implications of Texas Senate Bill 4. I brought this item up to discuss this Senate Bill 4, which is expected to be signed into law after several calls from the public and Mexican counterparts. Laredo continues to be the largest port in the United States, and because of our formula, the Laredo formula relies on strong bilateral collaboration, having strong border security through support and presence of law enforcement agencies, and not having a border wall. This is how we continue to be a leader in trade, $240 billion in total trade through September of this year, while at the same time having one of the lowest illegal crossings and being listed as one of the safest cities in the country. So for the public, Texas State Bill 4 would make it a state misdemeanor to illegally cross the border from Mexico into Texas. The bill would make it a state crime to cross the Texas-Mexico border between ports of entry. If Texas peace officer, if Texas peace officer has a probable cause to believe a person crossed the Rio Grande, that person could be charged with a Class B misdemeanor, which carries a punishment of to six months in jail. If the person had been previously convicted of entering Texas illegally under SB4, the charge would be increased to a second degree felony, which carries a punishment of two to 20 years in prison. Now, there's a letter that was sent from Senator Zaffarini, I'd like to read. To the Honorable Dr. Victor Trevino, Mayor, and member of Laredo City Council, dear Mayor and City Council members, thank you for your leadership and hard work on behalf of our mutual constituents in our beloved hometown. Because we share an interest in border security and a concern about inappropriate proposal that could be detrimental to our community and region, I am attaching a copy of the statement I made when the Senate debated the Senate Bill SB4 by Senator Charles Perry Art Lobach relating to prohibitions on the illegal entry into our illegal presence in the state by a person who is an alien. Articulating my strong opposition to the legislation, I emphasize constitutional questions, potential risk to due process, and troubling provisions related to arrest and detention of persons seeking asylum. Repeatedly, I highlighted the bill's logistical and legal challenges, underscoring potential financial burdens for counties, lack of consideration for the complexities of international law, and the likelihood of negative impacts on vulnerable groups, including mothers and children. We who represent the region have asked repeatedly that our bipartisan suggestion and feedback be considered. To facilitate doing so, I also distributed copies of Common Sense Border Management Solution for the Texas border by International Bank of Commerce Chair Dennis Nixon to each member of the Texas Senate, as well as Governor Greg Abbott and Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick. This report provides insightful analysis that can contribute to our understanding and management of the Texas-Mexico border, is enclosed for your review. For additional information, please contact me. Now, I also have a letter from the Council, the Mexican Council here in Laredo. And it's translated, but basically, it says, "Los Laredos forms a binational community through which more than 40% of land trade between Mexico and the United States crosses. That partnership has been mutually beneficial. Day by day, the collaboration and interdependence between our two cities and our two countries continues to grow. This growing strategic alliance involves thousands and thousands of daily crossings and logistical support for trade to prosper. Thousands of immigrants and thousands of people from Mexico cross this border daily into our international bridges to make purchases, to visit relatives, or for tourist reasons. That whole relationship would be in danger if the Laredo police, instead of dedicating themselves to the security of their security function, begin to detain people on their racial appearance and to find out their immigration status. So the discussion now becomes, what is the legal position of the city of Laredo and by extension of the police department, especially in light of some conflicting federal ruling laws? Do our local police officers have the appropriate training on deportation and immigration laws? And we need to respond to the legitimate concern raised by Mexican counterparts and trade partners about this law potentially being used to racially profile Hispanics or unjustly target Mexican citizens." These are the letters that came up, and I open it for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
There's letters, written comments rather than need to be read into the record before we have discussion. Can we do that as a point?
Yes, let's go ahead, Mr. Sir. Read into the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Councilmembers, not identity on Public Information Manager for the city. I do have one written comment on this item, it's from Mary Perez, she's Board Director of Laredo Immigrant Alliance. It reads, Dear Laredo City Council, I'm writing to express my deep concern regarding item 62A1 on the agenda which pertains to the discussion and potential action on the status and implication of Senate Bill 4 as before. This bill, if enacted in essence, would criminalize many of our community members and carries far-reaching consequences for our community. SB4, passed by the Texas Legislature and awaiting Governor Abbott's signature, raises alarms due to its potential impact on immigrant communities and public safety. The creation of new misdemeanor and felony offenses, coupled with provisions allowing or requiring law enforcement agents to act as border patrol agents, could lead to detrimental outcomes, including but not limited to criminalizing the innocent racial profiling and discrimination. Criticism from civil rights groups and immigration advocates highlights the perceived racism, bigotry, and unconstitutionality embedded in SB4. As a border city with a significant Hispanic and immigrant population, Laredo has a unique stake in this matter. The city's history of challenging anti-immigrant policies underscores our commitment to protecting the rights and well-being of our residents. I strongly urge the City Council to take decisive action during the discussion. Whether it be passing a resolution condemning SB4, joining or initiating a lawsuit against the state, or exploring alternative legal and policy measures, our response must reflect a commitment to justice, fairness, and the well-being of all Laredo residents. Thank you for your attention on this critical issue, and I trust that the City Council will act in the best interest of our diverse community."
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
So I agree with you, Mayor. I think not only should this item be discussed, but also we should seriously consider entering into some type of legal action to challenge it. And I say that for a couple of reasons. First, the Arizona law, the Papers Please law from a few years back, was found to be unconstitutional, and it did lead to what Ms. Perez was talking about, racial profiling and this, the fact that law enforcement, that we need for our local security was being used to try to implement federal law or enforce federal law, when that is the entire purview of the federal government and requires special training. So you're putting our law enforcement officers in a really risky situation to try to confront people enacting laws that perhaps they don't have the understanding of. Also, I think it perpetuates this narrative that somehow we are unsafe. And what we know here is that whether we're number three in the country, whether we're number seven in the country, we are one of the safest cities in the entire nation. So for this law to come down and we pretend as if somehow our security is at risk is a lie, and I don't think we as a community should accept that. It is a huge slap in the face to our Mexican neighbors. They are the number one trading partner of the United States. There was $300 billion worth of trade that came through our port last year that ran through Mexico, whether Mexico was the originator nation or whether that came from other nations. We have an excellent relationship with our neighbor, and the fact that we would allow this lie to be perpetuated by our inaction seems to me to be deeply unfair and does not encourage good relationships with our number one trading partner. Again, I do think this puts our law enforcement in, could put them in risky situations and also asks our city to put on the burden of federal law enforcement when that is not our purview. And that in addition to all of the negative impacts of racial profiling that's possible and the message that it sends to our neighbors, I do believe that we should enter into some type of legal action and basically fight this unconstitutional law.
Thank you. Legal, do we have any direction on your behalf?
Mayor, we can explore taking legal action, or if you're asking about the current policy or intended policy of the police department and city management to enforce this, we can discuss that. But if we are going to talk about pending or contemplating litigation, then I would counsel that we need to go into executive session for that as opposed to giving my strategy to the other side out here.
All right, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to thank you, I was just going to chat. Just going to add that this is an example of what happens when people that aren't from the border or haven't lived on the border write legislation about something that affects us so much. And of course, it's the statewide law, and it doesn't exclusively pertain to border communities. But you have Senator Zaffarini, a Democrat, and you have the fact that she shared this common sense border solutions report from IBC Bank Chair Dennis Nixon, who I think most of the community is aware is not a Democrat. And, but he's from this area and he's lived in this area, and he knows the types of things that we actually need to do, common sense border solutions. This is clearly a political bill meant to not actually solve and get to the root of the problem. So, I mean, at the very least, you know, a resolution, but I look forward to hearing from our legal team in the executive session.
Yes, go ahead.
My only concern, or one of my concerns, is, from the law enforcement stand. Chief Rodriguez, would you mind stepping up here to the lectern, please? Just a couple of questions. First of all, wouldn't we be spread thin as far as our department is concerned, the police department? Second, our officers aren't trained in immigration law, and that's opening the door for the department and the city to get sued. Liability purposes is what's worrying me more than anything else. Because our law enforcement, our agency, our LPD, is not trained in immigration law, that's what worries me more than anything else. And of course, the staff. We're already having issues with staffing in certain areas of the city of Laredo, and then to augment it by putting this in place is a huge problem, from what I see. Would you please explain a little on that?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Chief Rodriguez, Chief Viga Rodriguez for the record. Yes, there's a lot of concerns to this law. We've been engaging in several conversations with several major city police leadership. One of the main concerns for us here at the border, for other cities like Dallas, their concern is more the profiling part.
Right.
For us, it's more the fact that people will stop reporting. What we've seen in our numbers is that, for example, domestic violence is one of the crimes that, one of the calls that we most respond to, that involves people that are not from here. And so, it's a major concern for us because we know that people will stop reporting. And for us, our priority is the safety of the community in general, no matter where you're coming from. So that's a major concern. Another concern is what you just said, the training part. So there's been conversations as to, okay, what is the plan here? One is definitely we're going to have to engage in conversation with the sheriff. Cecilia is going to have you space to do, to effect this kind of arrests. And the most important one is the district attorney. How are we going to engage in prosecuting these type of crimes? If it's, when it's signed. But more than anything is, it's going to take a lot of time to be able to effect this kind of arrest or to engage in this type of prosecution. But more than anything is that we don't have the personnel. Right now, year to day, we're up with over 200,000 calls for service. So we don't have the manpower to address this issue. So that's the conversations that we're having with major cities as to how we're going to be engaging and strategically put a plan together to be able to address this law. Aside from that is, we really don't have the space at the local jail. Where are we going to be transporting these individuals? And at the same time, whenever we stop somebody, how are we going to be engaging in that conversation about immigration? So it just, it's a lot of things, there's a lot of moving parts to it. But again, we seriously need to sit down and talk about how we're going to be doing it.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm assuming that the Council is going to want to go into executive session to discuss this, but before we do that, with your permission, since it is your item, I'd like to make a motion to bring up Mr. Galván's recognition, to not keep him here waiting much longer, and then we reconvene to go into executive session for the item on the table?
Yeah.
That's my motion, Mayor, to bring up item 62A3.
All right. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
So you're going to skip the comments from the public? I signed in to speak, you know. Followed by public, I'll also make a motion, Mayor, for public comments to follow after the recognition.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right. 62A2, recognition presentation by Parks and Recreation and other city departments. Let's skip the three, sorry. Recognition of Lucas Galván and presentation of the keys to the city of Laredo, or his contributions to the community. Now, the key to the city of Laredo is presented to Mr. Lucas Galván for his successful involvement with business owners, youth, and the community at large, a model Laredon that exemplifies a selfless and philanthropistic spirit. Mr. Galván?
Mayor, for the record, former county judge Danny Wadiz. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. Galván's family, they're here, they have him to be here, his family, his sons, his granddaughters, and friends, friends that we've known Mr. Galván for a long, long time. There's a long, there's a long history. We could probably be here all night talking about Mr. Galván. A very unassuming person that took a lot for him to be here. In fact, he got after us because when he found out, he got after his wife. Why are they doing that? But I think it's long in coming. He's very well-known, maybe a lot of the younger folks don't know him or know about Mr. Galván, but most of us that have been around know what he's done for the community, what he's given back to the community. Again, he's a very unassuming man, but he's touched a lot of lives, he's impacted a lot of lives. Mayor, and we want to thank you on behalf of his family and friends that are here. Thank you and City Council for recognizing Mr. Galván's efforts. Very well deserved a person. Thank you.
Yes, just other comments here. Mr. Galván, my opinion is a representation that the American dream can be achieved by anyone that is willing to work hard, dream big, and give back to the community. A little about Mr. Galván. He was born in Matamoros, Tamaulipas, Mexico in 1935, but was raised in Brownsville. He would also drop, he would also soon drop out of middle school to help raise and support his five brothers and sisters, and worked as a migrant worker for 10 years, starting at the age of eight years old. Mr. Galván then served in the US Army from 1957 to 1959. In 1964, Mr. Galván lodged his first company, a little used clothing shop in Brownsville, and later added two more locations, one in Laredo and one in Brownsville. In 1986, Mr. Galván was able to open the Los Amigos Distribution Center Incorporated, the manufacturing recycling business that has steel-based products, recycled used clothing, clothes wipes, and textile fibers for re-weaving. Despite a very busy work schedule, Mr. Galván always had time, made time to be involved in his community. He advocates for the Hispanic Americans and other minority groups. He also provides private funding for scholarships and school tuition for the needy. He has donated truckloads of clothes to charitable organizations, both in Laredo and Nueva Laredo, along with donations to the Juvenile Donation Center in Nueva Laredo, St. Jude's Children's Hospital, Sacred Heart of Laredo, and Easter Seals. Along with other accolades, in 1982, Mr. Galván was selected Businessman of the Year by the Texas Association of Mexican-American Chamber of Commerce, nationally recognized by the SBA and the Laredo Manufacturers Association. Mr. Galván was also one of the founders of the Laredo Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and was the president of the organization for three consecutive years. For these great achievements, Mr. Galván, you're being recognized by the city of Laredo, highest honor, the keys to the city of Laredo.
Ready? One, two, three. Right over here, one, two, three. Thank you.
One more, one more, Mayor. One more for the Laredo Morning Times, so. One more, one more. Mr. Miller, let him out, Mr. Miller.
Three, two. Sorry, can you turn it on? Three, two. Good, thank you.
Congratulations, Merry Christmas.
Good to see you, Judge. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Good to see you, Judge. Thank you. Good to see you.
Public comments. All right. Public comments, Rafael Flores.
Good evening, my name is Rafael Flores, I'm just a regular citizen here in Laredo. I came to do a classic show and tell, kind of like when we were in grade school, I gave Dr. King the flapper from the toilet bowl. Have you all seen it? If you could pass it down, I'd appreciate it. I've already spoken to two doctors tonight as to the effects of overchlorination in our drinking water, but that's what it's doing to the flappers. And that's only three months in my toilet bowl. It's clean, it's not dirty, that's city of Laredo water. If it's doing that to that rubber, what's it doing to our innards? And I've yet to find a doctor that could tell me what overchlorination in our drinking water is doing. But I do know enough about chemistry that when you have that much chlorination in your drinking water, more than in your swimming pool, because you go into the swimming pool and it doesn't eat your shorts off, you know? But it's doing that to the rubber and hard plastics on that flapper in the toilet bowl. So whoever this gentleman is that's over the water department, if he's here, let's call, let's call over.
Yes, please address the council, please, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, that's it. May I have my toy back? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring back item number 63A1.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to include our city manager and our city attorney.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Executive session. All right, back to regular session, it is 5:38. 6:38 PM. All right, we were on item 62. It's going to be 6. A1.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to move that we direct our city attorney and our chief of police to explore a clarification of SB4, understand what the implications could be for our local resources, our local police officers, and also explore relationships with other border communities to see how we confront this challenge perhaps together. I believe it was indicated that those opportunities to speak with other communities do exist, and for them then to come back with recommendations at our next council meeting.
Motion second.
Mr. Mayor, may I be heard briefly? Would you accept an amendment, Councilmember Cigarroa, that... Would you accept an amendment, Councilmember Ciarrua, that rather than council directing the police chief, that we ask legal and the city manager, just for purposes of clarification, to proceed as requested and as deemed accordingly and allow our city manager to do that?
Thank you for that clarification, so am I.
All right. Motion? Second. All in favor? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next item.
I believe, Mayor, it's a supplemental agenda?
No, we still have one more on 62, A3. No, A2. A2. 63 to recognition and presentation by Parks and Recreation and other city departments, sponsors, and collaborators on the successful first annual City Laredo Marathon, a USA TF-certified course and Boston Marathon qualifier. I had something on this. This is an item I wanted to bring up also. I do want to recognize Parks and Recreation and all the departments involved in putting out such a successful event. I also want to thank all of the sponsors, some of which include LNF, The Outlets, The Cigarroa Clinic, Z93, and IBC, and the private collaborators that were involved in the certification process. But more importantly, I want to reemphasize the importance of quality of life events in Laredo will highly benefit our community. They are good for our mental health and add on to our overall comfort and happiness. It will also help our tourism, as I know that this has also encouraged and motivated our sister city of Nola Laredo to start the certification process and to have their own marathon that will be one of a kind by national marathon. And I do look forward to seeing tourism increase in both our communities. So with that being said, Parks and Recreation has presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's an honor to stand here in front of you all and management. It's one of those moments that you put all the work into it and everything, and then after you sit back and you reflect, you say, wow, this is, this was, this was big. This was a big, big event for the City of Laredo. And like you said, for quality of life and that the City of Laredo can host these big events. You're talking about a major marathon, a full marathon, 26.2 miles, all right? Of course, I'm, I can be here forever thanking you, but I'm going to, before I even start, I'm just the face of the, of the department. People right behind me along, are the ones that put everything, that do all the, do all the, the hard work behind the scenes and make sure that everything goes successful. So I want to thank them personally. Cindy, I know the one that's not here is Nora May, she was also very instrumental. Also with, with Mr. Victor, Mr. Trevino, as part of getting this together, because this is, this is not an easy task, all right? This has got months and months of planning. But let me just kind of give a little history before I start. Before we even qualified for a full marathon, we had to have two half marathons and make them successful. That we, everything was according to security and all that. So two, for two years in a row, we, we did a half marathon, and it went very well. So then we, we applied for the, for the full marathon to become a Boston qualifier. You know, everybody is, the Boston qualifier meeting is like the Super Bowl of, of, of the marathons. So luckily enough, we, we, Boston Association came and certified the course. I think they came a couple of months before we, before we, is that right? USA Trucking, they came and they certified the course. It was challenging to get through all those 26.2 miles, and they certified the course. It's okay, now it's certified, so if anybody that qualifies with the type, you have to meet certain time criteria to be able to run according to your age. So ages of 16 to 20, 20 to 29, you have to run certain criteria to be able to qualify. Just because you ran doesn't mean you're going to go qualify for the Boston Marathon. So if we, if I may lead to the second slide. On November the 5th, the City of Laredo was excited to announce the first marathon was a huge success. It was an ambitious activity that brought 150 runners to the community and it raised a qualified seven runners from Laredo, oh, from the race for the 2025 Boston Marathon, which is in February. These are the seven qualifiers that qualified for the Boston, for the 2025 Boston Marathon. Diego Ramirez, 16 and 19, United High School student. Luis Posada, 55 to 59. Eduardo Ibarra, male, 35 to 39. Michael Morris, which was, which was the winner, age 30 to 34, which by the way, he ran the 26.2 miles in two hours and 35 minutes, which is, that's, that's pretty fast for 26.2 miles. Mr. Tanyo Ortiz, female, she was, she was a female winner. Daniel Ortiz from Mexico, under 35 to 39. And Victor Bracamontes, male, 35 to 39. So these seven individuals did qualify for the 2025 Boston Marathon. The overall winner, Michael Morris, the male winner from Austin. Tanyo Ortiz was the female winner, she's from Giddings, Texas. And let me, before I go to the next one, in after the, after the race, Tommy and I were able to talk to him, speak to him. Hey, guys, you know, you guys have been around, you guys have been around the marathon and, what do you think about it? Say, gentlemen, it is a great race, very impressed with the City of Laredo. Security was amazing. I had no, there's some races that we got to cross and we got to make sure that there's no, nothing, no cars coming, everything was well planned. Now we're going to get the word out. I know recently you all, the government of Mexico, the word is out there in Mexico too that they want to come next year. They're already asking when. Tentatively, we're looking at Veterans Day weekend next year, because I think we'll get more participants as well, which will be a weekend late, later than we did this year. So the word is out there. The word is out there that we, we, we did something right. We did something right. And with the guidance of Mr. Trevino, that we all got together to all departments, traffic, police, fire, everybody from our groundskeepers to our rec center staff, it was an all hands on deck and, and, and we, to make this successful. So really excited about it. We really, we want to make this, we got Marathon 2.0 coming next year, and it's going to make a lot better, and we're going to, we're going to promote it more. And hopefully, we even got some people from, reached out to us from, from Africa that want to come and run some, run the race over here. So that'd be great as well. So in conclusion, again, I want to thank everyone. This is our logo that we had for, for, for our marathon, and we are looking forward to next year. We're going to start planning a lot earlier because now it's going to get bigger. So, so, so we will, thank you for your all's support. Thank you for everything that you're backing this management and everybody as well that makes it successful and, and our department that we always want to make, Dr. Yezid, Mayor, we always want to improve the quality of life, and that's our goal every day.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Go ahead, counsel.
I want to thank staff for putting this event together, the project. I know that it aligns with your vision, Mayor, of having a healthier community and a healthier city, and it's because of events like this that we're getting there and the different events that promote exercise and the well-being of one that, that you have led. But I did want to recognize the efforts of Victor Trevino Jr., because I know that he was at the forefront of ensuring that this happened. The athlete in him, I'm sure pushed this through, and I know he was part of the strategic planning, and thank you for your foresight in, in driving this and bringing this to the table so that staff could run with this, literally, right? I don't know about if Coach ran it or not.
We drove, we drove the course.
Very, very thankful with, with that, Victor. So thank you very much for, for the thoughtfulness in putting this and bringing this to the community, and of course, the partners, and also council member Lisa Cigarroa and her family for their contribution to bring even more attraction, right? More runners, because obviously, you know, like they say, right? There's money involved. You're going to have a lot more participants. And so I did want to just point that out, your vision, Mayor, the idea also from, from Victor, the collaboration of partners like the Cigarroas and, and all the other community sponsors, and also the hard work, dedication, and commitment from staff. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item.
May I?
Go ahead.
Discussion with possible action to allow council by majority vote to suspend a council member who is found by trial court by a preponderance of the evidence to have been elected by or participated in voter fraud or any other illegal or unethical means, notwithstanding the exhaustion of any appeals and any matters incident thereto. I would just clarify that the accusation is not that a council member actually participated in that, but that the election of that council member was brought upon by voter fraud or any other illegal or unethical means, notwithstanding the exhaustion of any appeals or any matters incident thereto. So we, the item comes up because we did hear from the Fourth Court of Appeals finally, and I think it behooves us to go over what the Fourth Court of Appeals findings were. This has been an appeals decision that we've been waiting for months as a community. It impacts the election of the city council, a city council seat. It, it impacts how this body functions. We function with elected officials that have been elected by the majority of the vote in each district. The appeals court findings are as follows. First, they accepted the election administration testimony that the vote count that he submitted was correct. Second, the appeals court found that the election night vote count of six votes between the two candidates for the District 2 seat in November of 2022 was six votes, a difference. Third, the, the third finding was that they accepted that five illegal votes were votes cast in favor of Ms. Campos Rodriguez. Fourth, they accepted that three votes were determined to be illegal due to residency requirements. So their final conclusions were that the final canvas on election night showed Ms. Campos Rodriguez with 1,957 votes, Mr. Richie Rangel with 1,951 votes, which again is a six vote difference. Secondly, six illegal votes remained unchallenged during this process. So we start the count with six illegal votes. They found that five illegal votes were for Ms. Campos Rodriguez. So now we have a total of 11 illegal votes that the courts affirmed, that the court affirmed, and that three illegal votes did violate residency, or three votes did violate residency requirements, which means an additional three illegal votes. The appeals court found that there were 14 illegal votes for Ms. Campos Rodriguez. And with the election vote count accepted at six votes, then this election would favor Mr. Ricardo Rangel. And I'll, I'll quote them. "We conclude that the true outcome of the November 8th, 2022 election for Laredo City Council District 2 was that Mr. Richie Rangel received more votes than Ms. Daisy Campos Rodriguez, and that Mr. Richie Rangel won the election." Accordingly, we affirm the trial court's judgment. The concurring opinion was, a concurring opinion was also written by another one of the three judges that, that participated in the appeals court ruling. That concurring opinion was, quote, "The trial court did not abuse its discretion by determining that at least 12 of the illegal votes cast were for Ms. Campos Rodriguez." So again, accepting the six vote difference in the election night vote count that this appeals court found was the true vote count, the total number of votes cast in that election favored Mr. Ricardo Rangel, and he is the true winner of the District 2 election of November of 2022. I bring forward this item because I would like to see an ordinance that gives the council some measure of authority to police our own members. This election is not something that is just some show, or isn't it interesting, some soap opera, that there is discrepancies in who is the election night winner? We now have two courts, three judges on the appeals court, the first trial court judge, and then the remaining six appeals court judges who refused to rehear this case and accepted what their three other members decided, which was the trial court's judgment found Mr. Ricardo Rangel is the true winner of the District 2 election. In this country, the majority vote rules. We do a disservice to the residents of District 2 who voted in this election if we do not accept what their voice and their vote determined. They did not choose, the majority of District 2 residents did not choose Ms. Campos Rodriguez. They chose Mr. Ricardo Rangel. And we have now a preponderance of evidence that shows that. So to pretend that we can sit back and not comment until the appeals court, the appeals process is completely exhausted does a real disservice to what we need to uphold here as elected officials. We are talking about the integrity of our electoral system. We talk all the time about how people do not feel that their vote counts. And unfortunately, this is a sad case that shows them perhaps sometimes that is true. We need to restore the faith in our electoral process by taking this small action. This ordinance will not remove Ms. Campos Rodriguez from her seat. The Texas, State of Texas Election Code provides for that seat to remain in her hands until the entire appeals court process, the appeals process has been exhausted. But we should, as I will repeat, we should also not ignore the preponderance of evidence. And we should work to restore faith in our election process, and at the very bare minimum, suspend the duties of the current council member in District 2, recognizing that the preponderance of evidence shows that Mr. Rangel should be making the decisions for District 2, that Mr. Rangel should be determining how district priority fund should be spent for his constituents. And the suspension should last until the appeals process has been thoroughly exhausted. So I will call for an ordinance that, that follows that, and I'll open the floor for discussion.
All right. Legal, what do we have to comment on that?
Mayor, if I may, how this motion is playing out, it's looking like it's, it's a possible deliberation coming up next regarding the discipline of a public officer. Therefore, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel matters, could pertain to this. I would advise that it be taken to executive session unless the subject matter of the deliberation requested to be in public.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So that's your legal recommendation to go into executive session?
Yes, under the personnel exception.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, I ask, I guess, our city secretary, if we make a motion to go into executive session, would it trump the existing motion on the floor since it's been seconded?
Yes, it, we're talking about the deliberation portion.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to accept legal's recommendation.
Second. Motion second.
Mayor, may I? May I add a clarification? So you did say, what would be the determining factor to keep this in the public view?
If the subject of the deliberation wishes to have the deliberation held in public as opposed to executive session, that would be council member Campos Rodriguez.
Can I repeat that, someone, please? I'm sorry.
It's your right to have deliberations out here as opposed to deliberations in executive session.
Motion has been seconded.
I have one more clarifying question.
Go ahead.
Zone, if we have public comment on this item, would that come before or after?
It should come before deliberations.
Okay. Mayor, I believe that Mr. Rangel is here to speak on that item.
Motion has been passed and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, we should hear the public comments before you go in.
Okay. All right. So that is, that is the point of order.
To have public comments and then go into deliberation, then come back out here to entertain that motion.
All right. Okay.
Well, first of all, for the record, council, mayor, thank you. My name is Ricardo Rangel. I'm the official winner for District 2 City Council race, apparently for the Fourth Court of Appeals. What can I say? There's a lot of things that have been going on through all these years. I've been going in and out into dedications and going to, to a lot of encasing courts. And for right now, what I'm seeing is, last time that I was here, there was a no confidence vote. And some of y'all, you know, did vote, some of y'all didn't vote. This time, we got two. We got the, from Judge Reed, now we have the Fourth Court of Appeals. It's two. You said you guys needed, you needed to wait for more evidence, more, so it'd be more clear, right? So what I'm asking now is, do the right thing. Now I am asking you to do the right thing. You know, I'm not asking to choose a side. Do not, do not choose a side. And I'm a little bit emotional because it's taken me a while to be here. It's taken me a long time. A lot of you have been here for a while. Mr. Gutierrez, you've been here for a while. Mr. Torres, you've been here for a while. It was my first time running for this event, and I've been through all this. And there's a lot of people that you might not think that I should be here, and there's a lot of people that do think that I should be here. The majority of District 2 thinks I should be here. And what I'm asking for the, for the council to come out and do the right thing. If you did, we did it, if I did it in front of everybody and did my litigation, did everything I had to do in front of everybody, or did my, you know, my, all my information was out there, you guys can do it out here too. You know, there's nothing shameful with what happens. A vote is a vote. Do the right thing. Don't be scared of, you know, there's, I know you're not scared, but I'm saying, do not be worried about politics. Politics is politics. This is for the District 2, for the community of District 2. They're receiving, they're not receiving anything. If this passes, what's going to happen, that spot is going to be open. What's going to happen? Ms. Campos is just going to stay there and receive all, but every, every benefit she's there without doing any work? I'm not asking for work, because right now, I'm not receiving a penny from anybody. And to be, for the record, I'm not, I haven't, I haven't received any, what do you say? How do I say it? I haven't received any help from anybody. Everything has come from my, from me and my family, from my pocket, from my sweat. So every, every, every cash, every money, every money that I spent and my legal fees has been mine, just for the record, just to clear it up. So what I'm asking the council to do, if you're going to vote, vote out here. Do not be scared. This is not politics. This is doing the right thing for District 2. You guys have the integrity to do the things for District 2, do it. You guys, you asked for the vote for District 2, and you voted in front of people, hey, you show, you show your face and say, hey, this is what I'm going to, we're going to do. You're doing the right thing. You're not doing, you're not doing a favor for me. You're not doing a favor for Ms. Rodriguez. You're not. You're doing the right thing because that's the reason you guys ran for this, because you guys need to do the right thing. And I know you guys will. So with that said, thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. King. If I could just push back slightly, I understand you're saying it's a personnel matter, but we're talking about a public office, an entity as a public office. So, I mean, I'm going to ultimately respect your judgment. I just want to make sure we're clear. I don't think we're talking about a person here. And that's the problem in Laredo. Everything's personal. Everything is personal. And for me, this is not personal. This is purely about honoring the process, the democratic process that clearly, by, as mentioned eloquently by Councilmember Cigaroa, by trial court judge, two sets of appeals. We, it's, it's, we all know the inevitable, what's happening, but it's still, the evidence has come out in a way that wasn't the case 10 months ago. So the point is, this isn't personal. This is about an office, an entity. So if we're here to discuss an entity, an election, do we really have to go to executive session to discuss an entity and a public office? Not the person, but the entity. That's what we're talking about here, right?
Councilmember, I appreciate that. And again, I work for you all. I'm trying to keep us in compliance with Texas Open Meetings Act. If the, the motion was about public integrity of the, of the council, for instance, in other jurisdictions, a council member in that other jurisdiction was arrested for a DWI. There's no conviction yet, right? No finding of guilt, but there was a mechanism in place, an ordinance, that allows for suspensions and censures and such. So if you're talking about that generality, then yes, it's about the office. But here, because of the way it's worded, I believe it is targeted to, you know, one instance that's currently, you know, at the forefront. So it's, you can't divorce this individual council member from this motion. That's my recommendation to you all.
Because anyone I talk to in my community, in my district, anytime someone just casually comes up to me, the first thing they say, what's going on with District 2? When are we going to know? When are we going to know who is the, you know, and of course, you know, the legal, we understand there's a legal process. It's taken far too long. It's been over a year since the election, and however many, 10, 11 months since, you know, this all got started legally. So the people are very frustrated. The people that I represent are frustrated. And it's, the situation is embarrassing, all of us. And notice I'm saying the situation is embarrassing all of us. I'm not saying any person is embarrassing us. The situation is embarrassing. So my point, the people want to hear us talk about this. The people want to know where we stand. So we can go crowd in the back in executive session and probably get nothing accomplished, and then come right back and hopefully we can have a decision. But, I mean, I'm not going to vote to go into executive session because I don't think it's going to solve anything, so.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Councilmember Cigaroa's next.
Go ahead.
I share a similar sentiment as Councilmember King. We are elected officials. We are not personnel. Ya se a veces cuando se conviene, we're personnel with the pension, and, but at the end of the day, we're elected officials. This item in and of itself, yes, we have an example at hand, but in and of itself is an ordinance that should be discussed in public, that would stand from here on into the future, trying to prevent any such situation that we have, that we're facing at the moment. So I, for one, as well, don't understand why we would be going into executive session.
All right, go ahead, council.
I think that there needs to be clarification as to the recommendation. I don't think all of us are understanding why executive session is being recommended. And I first want to address a point that Mr. Rangel makes, right? There's no votes that would be cast in executive session. So if the motion to vote on anything that has been made by Councilmember Cigaroa in second and by Councilmember Cigaroa from District 8 would happen out here in the open to comply with Toma, number one. Number two, the consultation with attorney, which I'm assuming would be the applicable executive session section that we would be using here, which would be probably 071, would be to consult specifically on any potential litigation. Is that correct, Zone?
If there is contemplated litigation, then it would be consultation with attorney. I don't know if that's where the motion and the deliberation is headed. If that's the case, then that would be a consultation with attorney. But if it's about personnel matter, and specifically, I'm talking about, as 074 states, to deliberate a discipline of a public officer, which includes you all, that's the personnel side of it. And you can go speak specifically to that personnel side, then come back out here and speak in generalities. It just, that just respects that, that personnel portion of your deliberation. You don't have to hold every deliberation back there on this item, but just specifically to protect the personnel matter. That's what I advise.
And my other question would be, let's just assume this council were to vote down your recommendation of going to executive session. You're telling us that lawfully, Councilman Rodriguez would be the one to determine whether she wants open session or closed. She's already publicly requested closed session. What happens then?
It, it should go to closed session, honestly. If you're going to speak to that. If not, then I would recommend if you're going to come out here and speak, if it's out here and Councilmember Rodriguez had wished for it to be in closed session, then you should speak in generalities, not speak as specifically to her and her case. That would respect the personnel.
Not even the case.
Again, it's a line, I'll sit here and watch the line for you, but that's the line that we're trying to respect, that personnel matter that relates to her.
So we, we've always followed Legal's advice. So I'm going to have my motion stand and let my colleagues vote how they like. Again, we will come back out, right? And you all can say whatever each one of us wants to say, but just to continue moving and, you know, hear from you, what happens next, I'm assuming would be also a reason for us to go back there and then come back and do what we're going to do in the open. Yes.
Mayor.
All right. We have a motion.
And I apologize because my screen is not.
All right. We have a motion that's been seconded. We need to go back.
I would like to clarify something. Zone, if the ordinance, I understand we're talking about a specific example, but before that, before we have a discussion on specifics, if we could then just discuss this ordinance that is meant to give us some powers to act for any future cases as well. So the ordinance is not for this District 2 seat. The ordinance is for any council member that attains a seat and has been found then by a trial court and a preponderance of the evidence, which could be the appeals process, to have been elected by or participated in voter fraud or any other illegal or unethical means. And again, voter fraud, not accusing the council member participating, but that the election had voter fraud in it. So the ordinance then is to allow us to be able to have this power to self-police into the future as well. So it is not dependent on the person who is sitting in District 2 seat. It is for any council member elected when voter fraud is an issue and has been found by a trial court and appeals court that the outcome was determined with voter fraud. That's meaning for us to have some power to be able to self-police in the future as well. Does that discussion occur here, or does it need to go into the back, into executive session?
Councilman?
Mayor, point of order, I think she's asking for Legal to answer that question.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Again, we're trying to, the spirit of Toma is to, in executive session, is to protect the consultation side with the attorney, you know, for contemplated litigation or for personnel matters, for matters that would be difficult for that individual to want to address in public. So I, to see how this would play out, I imagine if you go back in executive session, speak to those matters, come out here and speak to the rest, or you can speak in generalities out here, and if a personnel issue comes up, then we can take that to the back. Either way would work. It's, again, I'm just trying to respect the confidential nature of the exception.
All right.
But everything else should be in open. That's, that's the nature of the Open Meetings Act.
Call for the questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Against, because, I mean, regardless, if something comes up pertaining to our Toma, then we're going to go back. So it's, it's the same thing.
Okay. Or against.
I'm not going to vote because I think we already discussed this at the beginning, and we need to follow Legal's recommendations.
So you're for going into executive session, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the tie? Four-four? It's four-four. Going to executive session, Mayor?
Executive session. Executive session.
To go back into executive session for item number 18, which is request for executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney for the pending or contemplated litigation related to the appeal of Campos Rodriguez versus Rangel. To also include item number 59, which is request for executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, related to the contemplated litigation against the federal government regarding the Biden administration's revocation of 27 federal laws along the Stark County border where the city of Laredo has property interests and any other matters incident there too. This is the advice of our legal counsel, and for the executive session to also include our city manager, and to further, I'm guessing, discuss item of the supplemental agenda if needed, which we were back there for already, which is item number supplemental item, Roman numeral 1A1, and that would also be under Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.074, which is personnel matters.
Motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry. May I?
Yes, go ahead.
We were advised to, and we're going to come back out.
Okay.
Again.
I just want to ask, when we come back and I discuss all of my items regarding, I have something that I want to read.
All right, let's go back into the conversation first. Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Executive session. Back to regular session, 8:25 PM.
So, the item?
So, motion?
There is, may I?
Yeah.
We have the motion.
On the supplemental, there was a motion to approve.
Yes. Could you remind us, please, what the motion is?
To approve the item at the end of the day. And it was seconded.
May I make an amendment to, 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 to?
Go ahead.
To request that Legal bring back any other recommendations for, to uphold the public integrity of our office.
I understand. Motion amended.
I'll accept the amendment.
All right. Motion amended.
Can we take this opportunity to discuss a little clarification?
Legal, there's something.
I'll start. So in the discussion of the item that this motion is, that this motion will address, the suspension of a council member who is found by trial court by a preponderance of the evidence to have been elected by or participated, have been elected by voter fraud or any other illegal or unethical means, notwithstanding the exhaustion of any appeals and any matters incident thereto, with the accepted amendment to allow this to go to our city attorney and include any other language that would be needed to strengthen it as a means for council to use it to enforce and police on its own. I think it's going to be deeply unsatisfying to the public at large. This ordinance cannot take effect for anything that has happened in the past, and that is according to our legal counsel. It is important because we do want to send a message to the voters that the integrity of elections matter, and that council should be allowed to police itself so that we can restore the faith in our electoral process. But this ordinance on its own will have no bearing on past actions or past events, according to our legal counsel. And Zone, if you would care to continue that.
Okay, Legal. Mr. Zone, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor. Any laws that deal with discipline or suspension and so forth, that would be a due process issue. So therefore, you cannot have an ex post facto law. You can't have a law and then go back and say, well, you violated last year, two years ago, what have you. So that, everyone has to have a right to notice of, of, of the act that, that would be in violation before they're, they're, they have anything taken from them, such as a suspension, which is what this, this motion dictates. So therefore, whatever is passed and an ordinance is gonna require another reading before passage, and once it's passed, then it is the law of the city and any violations of it would have to occur after the passage, not prior to. Kinda like when you change the speed limit, you can't say, well, now it's a different speed limit and, and you violated it last week. It has to go forward, not backwards.
All right.
Would you accept the amendment to include the, also forwarding the spirit of this ordinance to the Charter Review Committee to-
Strengthen?
To strengthen it and cement it in the charter?
Okay, we have a motion, go ahead.
So this is for the, for the record and for the public. As many of you saw when this came up, I did come out and, and got out of my seat to give you all a packet. In that package that I gave our city attorney, my colleagues, mayor, and city secretary, this is for you to put on the record, please. In that package, they have a full petition submitted to various departments from the Attorney General, even to the State Elections Office. And this, this agencies are investigating Mr. Ricardo Richie Rangel and his immediate family, friends.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I have to interject, this is outside the scope of-
It's the same thing, it's within my case.
This is a different allegation altogether. It's, it has, it's not related to the votes that were at issue at trial and at the Court of Appeals.
All right, so that would be your suggestion to abstain from this?
Yes, that, not, not go into this matter because it is outside the scope of what was posted.
We need to follow legal recommendations.
So then what is your recommendation to, to, to bring this up? Because it's still with my case.
You can bring it up next, at the next meeting, but as far as this posting, I do not believe that this falls within the scope of, of this item.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead. We have a motion, let's go.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify what happened. According to the trial court and the case that was presented and Ms. Campos Rodriguez's case, all of the evidence that needed to be submitted for the determination of that case has been presented and no new evidence can be presented in that to make, to influence the determination of that trial court or of the appeals court. Is that correct?
I don't believe that there's any mechanism that's left to reopen new evidence, no. It'd have to be a separate matter, but right now it's pending appeal to the Texas Supreme Court.
Thank you.
And this is for, for Councilmember Cigarrua. I know exactly what, what it is that can be determined and what can be sent in and what cannot be sent in. Unlike you, I do understand the legal process that it takes. However, this is for the, for, for, this was for the public, since they've been, they've been misinformed by, by people abusing their political power, for example, you. So I know the process. I know the process, I know, I know the course and I always ask you to let the process take its course.
All right, so we're gonna try not to make this a court of law and we can take these issues. So we have a motion, we need to vote on it.
Yes, yes.
All right. Call for the question. All in favor? Opposed?
Motion's have it, Mayor, uh, in favor. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next time.
Yes, yes. Mayor, I would like to motion that we request that our city attorney file a brief to the Texas Supreme Court to ask them to please shorten the time period for filing an application in this case and to expedite the decision-making in, in this case.
Motion second. All in favor?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, all in favor?
Somebody's pending, okay. Oops, sorry, my bad. Motion passes, Mayor.
Motion passes.
Executive session item.
All right, motion?
That's the one on the Biden administration.
We just report that at this time-
Do you wanna give us a-
No action will be taken.
No, it's G one.
G one. G one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Recognizing and thanking Councilmember Vanessa Perez for the successful completion of the duties as Mayor Pro Tempore for the city of Laredo from January eighteen twenty-three to November twentieth twenty-three and any matters incident there too, co-sponsored by Councilmember Governor Gonzalez and Councilmember Alberto Torres. I just wanted to bring this out, I think Vanessa Perez, Councilmember Perez, did a wonderful job serving our city as Mayor Pro Tempore. I needed to recognize her for it. I just wanna tell her, thank you very much for everything you've done. You did a wonderful job sitting there and being up and around the city, along with the mayor as well. I just wanna say thank you very much and give you a plaque that we made for you.
Awesome. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Here for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, thank you, um, here, but, um. I just wanna say that, you know, it's, it's an honor for, to represent the city in general, but, you know, it was my honor to, to serve in this capacity and I, I thank council for the opportunity. And I think we made some great improvements in terms of our relationships at the state level and so just wanna thank you all for, for your confidence.
All right.
So, so you all, you all, all of us are black.
Dr. King. B one.
B one.
Dr. King?
Yeah.
Would you mind if I make a motion to bring up the final item that goes along with what we were discussing before, which is F two, the resolution to request Ms. Campos Rodriguez to refrain from decision-making? Would that be all right to bring that up now so we can finish off with that? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring the item up, F two.
Go ahead.
We need to, to vote to bring it up.
Any second?
Yeah.
Second, okay. Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is a resolution to restore the faith by the public in our electoral process to request Ms. Campos Rodriguez to refrain from any decision-making or any expenditures of District Two funds until the appeals process, the election appeal between her and Mr. Ricardo Rangel Junior is exhausted. I do feel that because this is still a contested election in the legal realm that any decisions made by Ms. Campos Rodriguez or any decisions to expend any funds of District Two should wait until the court has made a final determination who is the rightful winner of the District Two election of November of twenty-twenty-second.
All right, motion, second. Just one comment on this, we just need to make everybody aware. We think that the process will take a short time, but if it doesn't, then we, we avoid the district getting funds and decisions that have to be made. So this is something just to consider. You'll need to put it out there before we vote. So we have a motion.
A discussion? Mayor, yeah, discussion.
Yes, question, go ahead.
So, I mean, just to add to the mayor's comment, I think that we've got to be very clear and I think this council wants the best for this community, this council wants to expedite this as much as possible, but this is being proposed and voted on in a form of a resolution which is not enforceable, right? So even if council votes this unanimously for the public watching and for everyone that may think that our action tonight would have some sort of enforcement, it will not. But it just shows that this council is what, in an ideal world, would want to have that occur. But this is in a form of a resolution, which means it's just ceremonial and although we hope that it sends a message, right? And I don't speak for the entire council, speaking for myself, that's what resolutions are, right? That they deliver a message and that is their purpose. But just like what Mr. Guan explained to us about the previous action we took, which couldn't be applied to the case at hand, this resolution is not enforceable either, right? So that the public doesn't have any other expectation, is the only comment I wanted to make, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll say similarly to what the last time we voted on something of this nature, back in, whether it's March roughly, the vote of no confidence to the situation, incident that happened. The, the point of us being up here is to, is to lead. The point of us being up here is to extend our values to the public so that when, you know, ninety-five percent of the people at home that get any information from the city, most of it's probably through social media channels and, you know, a lot of times what they're getting is, you know, us smiling and ceremonial things and events and, you know, all, all cheesing and, you know, it's very nice and all that stuff that we do, it is. But at the same time, the people are not stupid. They know, they know what's going on, they ask about it. Sometimes it feels like this city government acts in a way that pretends the people are dumb, that they don't actually know what's going on, they're not paying attention, but they are, they really, really are. So I think one of our biggest jobs is to send those signals to the community so we can get people to stop laughing at the city, okay? That's the point, is to show the people that we're actually trying to be different. So I believe it is important that we send some of these signals. And yes, Ms. Campos Rodriguez is not gonna do what we asked her to do tonight. We're gonna, we might pass a resolution right now and we're gonna ask her to refrain, but she's not gonna do it. And, and that's fine, that's, that's her prerogative. But it's our opinion, I think we're gonna vote, that it would be the right thing. It would be the right thing to step down, it would be the right thing to realize the light's at the end of the tunnel. We know where this is all going and just, and just concede. But that's probably not gonna happen. But it's still our point and our place to give the views that, that we believe. So, and that, that's, that's what the city does. We, we're here to express our views, to lead and to try to lead by example and to try to show people we're gonna do things differently. Thanks.
All right. Okay, we have a motion, second, any second? All right, let's vote.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
And just this is for the record, um, um, the District Two residents, I will continue being the council member for District Two, if anybody haven't done about that. I have to like, so I, my, all my legal proceedings, that is the right thing to do, that is our constitutional rights and I will continue to, to do it. Yes, I am seeking the Supreme Court for relief. So yes, Councilmember Tyler, I, I am not refraining from allowing my, my district to be without a voice. I haven't stopped working since day one and you're right, people do see, people do see what we do for them. People do see if we do a wrong, if we do a right, people see everything. We sometimes think that they're, they are not involved in council. It's, I'm so proud of South Laredo of how many people do watch council and how many people do see who does for the district and who doesn't. Because I got numerous of calls from District Three, thinking that District Two with the, with the rebound, with the redistricting, that it still represents part of the area, I'm calling about three fifty-nine, and these are not my words. People ask me, if you are not the council member, then who is? Who do I go to? They haven't done anything in my area. So people do see, I agree with you, the good and the bad. And yes, once again, I am going to continue being the council member till I exhaust all my options.
All right, thank you. Okay, vote. We're done?
Okay, Mayor, yes.
All right.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Yes, go ahead.
Make another motion and so our work as elected officials is about protecting good governance and restoring the public's trust in council and this responsibility shouldn't be taken lightly, nor should we be making decisions based on political loyalties or- political loyalties, our loyalties is to the public. I'd like to make another, a, a motion that the District Two, Ms. Campos Rodriguez be placed on administrative leave with pay until further notice.
I'll second that for discussion.
Motion, second?
Point of order, Mayor, I think Mr. Guan wants to-
Oh, yes.
Verify the scope of the item.
Go ahead, legal, please.
Well, there are two things, one, it's, um, let me just jump into the, the main issue then, whether it's out of scope or not, I mean, there's nothing in the, on the books that allow for that. That's, that's the, the issue. And I know you all passed an ordinance to create a, a way to police yourself. And that, that's the, where we are a, as a city. We have a city charter that because we're a homegrown city, you police yourselves as council. But there's been nothing put in place as to how to police. So unfortunately, I, I have to tell you that, I, I, it's my opinion and my counsel that you cannot entertain this motion because it would not be a legal motion. There's, there's no mechanism to place any of you all on administrative leave. So all you have in, in the charter is a mechanism to remove or, uh, for the voters to, to remove, but there's nothing that allows you all to sanction.
All right, based, based on your legal opinion, then that, that is not something that would be legal. So we cannot accept the motion.
May I still have the floor? Yet, we are considered-
Go ahead if I let you have the floor.
Thank you. We, we are considered personnel, or are we not?
Yes, considered personnel for TMS purposes, so yes, you are considered personnel, but again, who is your boss except yourselves? So that, that's what's unfortunate. Mr. Nebkin could put me on administrative leave because I answered him, but you all answer to each other. There's nothing that's in place.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
No, I, I'm gonna correct you, we are not each other's bosses, the people are our bosses. And there's a process called a recall, right? And that's how we get fired, right, through a recall election. But for, and that's the only disciplinary action that the charter has, is I guess what you're trying to tell us, right? But not even self-policing powers unless one of us commits a crime of moral turpitude and we're convicted of that crime.
Or a felony.
Or a felony, right? That's when we become each other's bosses, but I think it's the people, right? And the remedy is a recall election, right?
Well, short of that, there's no remedy for administrative leave, that's what I'm talking about.
Based on, based on that information, we'll not accept the motion.
Mayor, may I? And let me just make it clear.
Go ahead.
Like Councilmember Thor is just said, moral turpitude or any, any crime committed, mine is not, mine is not a, a criminal. Mine is all civil. It doesn't belong to the city, it belongs to the courts. And we all know the due process, we all know how it works. So I just wanna make it up to everybody, no, mine is not criminal, I did not do anything wrong. So, it is what it is.
All right, next time. Okay. Oh, go ahead, councilman. Okay.
B one?
All right. To some traditional business items. Sixty-three, B one. Discussion with possible action to instruct the utilities department to begin the process of exploring a rebate and incentives program for zero scapeing, drip irrigation and/or any other relevant customer incentive programs and any other matters. Incentive there too, co-sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Gutierrez and Junior and Councilmember Alyssa Seguro. So I've been made aware by my colleague to my right, Councilmember Betis, that she brought this item up maybe two or three years ago when she was first in office. And I understand there was a discussion back then that, so the reason why I brought it up is because, you know, I just believe we gotta do more to promote water conservation. Actually, going back to last agenda's meeting with all, on a secondary point of all the upkeep and maintenance and the cost for public works to, you know, to keep up with everything, zero scape would actually be, you know, good for that as well. But finding ways, this is about finding ways to encourage our residents, our customers to save more water and incentivize them with rebates similar to what SARS does in San Antonio, the San Antonio Water System. So I understand there might have been an issue with flushing. In the past, there's always that talk about, well, the city will get less revenue in the enterprise fund of the utilities. And I personally think that should be the last, you know, thought because we have, we all agree there's a water crisis. So conservation needs to be paramount. So I don't know if you have an updated opinion since the last time this was brought up. And yeah, I'll watch out.
For the record, Arturo Garcia, utilities director. I don't have any information for you today, but I can revisit the issue, see what SARS is promoting. We're in the process of updating our water conservation ordinance, which cycles every five years. So in reviewing that, we're gonna look at ways to, it promotes the conservation of water. And I know with what we're going through, through this drought period, that is, we're gonna need to be doing that because we're gonna be, I believe, maybe in the next couple of months, three months, we may be in stage three. So that's something that we won't be interested in.
Yeah, you know, it's a dire situation. And I'm just gonna say one thing, just to foreshadow to everyone. And I'm not saying you're gonna do this, but I have a feeling in a year, in two years, who knows, you're gonna come to this council and you're gonna request what? You're gonna request a rate increase, a water rate. Eventually, that's gonna happen. I, but I personally, I'm not gonna be able to vote for that until you bring us an incentives and rebate program.
Yes, we, I understand.
I mean, we have to have ways for people to be incentivized to save and conserve and not just continue with purely with rate increases being the answer to everything. So I'm just giving you that as a foreshadowing heads up, you know. It's something that we need to take a little more seriously, in my opinion, so.
Mayor, from me?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to speak on the conservation, we have a lot of waste, water waste in our city. I can tell you there's a lot of irrigation that happens on the evening hours or early morning hours when most people are, when our city departments are closed. I can give you one example, Delmar and I thirty-five, there's businesses there that irrigate way too much and the whole intersection becomes saturated with water runoff. And as many people know, that's actually the number one culprit for the degeneration of our roads. And so it's not just conserving water in terms of, it's like, yes, they're buying more water, they're using more water, we're selling water. But on the other hand, we're having to pump more money into road resurfacing because all this runoff is eroding our roads. And so we do need to find a way, maybe not just through an incentivized program, but we need to be a little stricter, especially on the commercial
Yes.
side, when you have water that is just being pumped onto the streets, if there's a broken sprinkler head or something like that, especially from a business. I think we need a phone number that people can call at whatever hour. I don't know if we have something like that, Mr. Neb. But it would save us money because we wouldn't have such degeneration of the road so quickly, especially in these crucial intersections. I can tell you the, we just resurfaced from Springfield East and from Springfield to the highway, the road looks totally different on Delmar. So we do, we do have an issue with this and I see it all the time, especially on mine's road. So in addition to incentivizing this, I think we need more punitive program for that type of situation.
The enforcement, just also to update you on regarding enforcement, we did add more code enforcement personnel from the water plant and distribution. So that we're able to, when we see these incidents, we can issue citations or issue warrants.
I'd like to make a motion, if I can, Dr. King, for us to advertise through PIO what the proper hours are to water so that it, you know, maximizes use and, you know, you can't be watering at noon because of evaporation and things like that. And then also a number to call when you see this runoff and have some kind of strict tiered enforcement that goes along with violations. So that would be my motion.
Do you mind if I amend?
Of course.
Go ahead.
Mayor, just for that, if we could move some of those new code enforcement officers maybe working after hours, after five P M. Because, she's correct, I've seen plenty of people in my neighborhood, all around the city of Laredo really, that are just watering all through, throughout the entire night because they know that staff isn't gonna be there. So just to kind of amend that, maybe put some officers out there during the night shift, just to kind of patrol around, because I know there's plenty of that going around. There's even some school districts that do this, that do that, and I've noticed that myself. Well, that's why I said some, I'm not gonna mention one or the other, so some. And private as well, private schools as well. But yeah, I think it'd be great if we could just add that into it, please.
Okay.
Yes, I'll accept, mayor, if that you're
Thank you, I'll second that, absolutely.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Okay.
I'm in the queue, I'm next.
Yes, go ahead.
So this just brought back the reminder on the paperless statements incentive. So we can have that come back sooner than later, before my term's over. And the other thing, mayor, I wanted to mention was, Councilmember Dr. King made reference to coming back and water rate increases. I don't know if people recall this, but we've already formulated them as automatic increases. So it's already there. So I'm gonna come back unless you come back and say we need more money. But y'all can discuss that once I'm gone. But I think that, you know, yes, we want to promote this and I agree with you. But at the same time, it's already formulated in there and I think that's where the incentive should come, right? Where maybe if you zero scape, you're not part of the increase. And the increase only applies for those people that don't have zero scape, you know, something to that effect.
So we have a motion? Go ahead.
Do we have a water conservation employee?
We, that individual left and we're in the process of hiring a new water conservation person.
Do we need to include that in an amendment?
I think that's a personnel.
Or maybe just
Unless you're gonna ask for another position on top of that one. We can have more people, right?
Expedite the speed filling of that spot. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, motion, have to admit second?
Yes, sir.
Is that motion second? Let's vote.
Someone missing? We're missing one person to vote.
Come from Seattle?
Okay.
Okay.
This is District Eight.
She did vote.
Now you have seen it now.
Okay. All right, motion passes, motion passes, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, like, is there
One, one more, one more. Go ahead and then next, Tyler.
Actually, can I just, sorry, I just recognized that the motion made by Councilmember Betis was a unique motion, which I agree with. We didn't actually motion to, you know, instruct utilities to bring us back or explore and bring us back proposals or possible
Make that motion again.
Incentive and rebate, that's what I'm trying to do. Incentive and rebate program, so, second, okay, thank you.
All right, motion?
Yeah, no, for sure, no, I'm just saying.
Vote?
Can we do it by him?
Second, any second?
Go ahead, vote. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, next.
Well, I'll share the proof, I'm sorry.
It's the last, last one, sorry. Number two here, discussion with possible action to instruct city attorney's office to assist, assist the utilities department in negotiating and drafting MOUs to begin the process of formalizing an official, quote, "Amistad Water Partnership", end quote, between the city of Laredo, city of Eagle Pass, Webb County, Maverick County, Zapata County and any other relative, relevant entities similar to the structure of the West Texas Water Partnership formed by San Angelo, Texas, Abilene, Texas and Midland, Texas, to help the region be more competitive for monies available in the expanded Texas Water Fund through the Texas Water Development Board since the passing of Proposition Six on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. And in addition to better regional advocacy in general for water security measures and any other matters, incentive there too.
I'll second if that's your motion.
All right, motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. Mr. Garcia, in establishing this water partnership, is this something that you believe your utilities department could do? Or is this something that would be better to find some outside help so that it can get done?
A combination of both would help. I know outside assistance would be helpful. I know I'm relying on legal, on the MOU. And as far as developing that language, because again, the interest for me is to make sure that what we set up, we're not being controlled by all these other entities where, based on the number of connections that Laredo has, we're the largest party of the group and to make sure that we have a good voice in the group. And that's, I'm working out those details because some of these memorandums that have been coming in tend to favor the group that's managing the project. So I wanna make sure that we have a strong voice. So any assistance is helpful and
So may I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Management, do you know where that would exist? I can, I can tell you just from my past life, as a member of the Rio Grande International Study Center, they established a partnership with Eagle Pass in the mid-range of the Rio Grande as part of a U.S. Bureau of Reclamation grant to engage with those communities and create a district that looks at the issues regarding the Rio Grande. I have not spoken to them. I have no idea they have the capacity right now to take that on. But I would encourage you to perhaps explore that because it needs to get done. And I understand, Mr. Garcia, you're working in the utilities department, there is the daily operations. We have these issues with our infrastructure, with making sure that our chlorination levels are good. And yet, this is incredibly important because we also are looking for not only that secondary water source, but we're also looking for how we can maintain the primary water source and conserve it as best as we can. So this is not an issue that can be, not, I don't wanna say ignored, but it gets overwhelmed by the daily operations. And that is not what council, if I understand correctly, that is not what council is asking for. It's really asking for a proactive movement to establish this partnership because it's a vital step in how we begin to secure our water future.
Yes, it's a community effort. We need to involve the community.
Mayor and councilmember, thank you. Yeah, the intent, I think, and this is based upon some conversations that happened last week as well, too. If these things are that, are important, I think we have to take them out of essentially the day-to-day work and set them and say, this is what we're going to focus on. So the secondary water, water issue, matter and these issues, I think we need to set them, give them somebody's responsibility for just that, as that responsibility. We would, I mean, we've hired consultants before to do a lot of different things. We can find that individual to focus on those, on those items. And I, I think we'll be a little bit more successful in what we're trying to accomplish in that manner. So I agree wholeheartedly and I'll be speaking with staff. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's vote.
Somebody's
Who's missing?
Motion passes, mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring up items supplemental, numero, Roman numeral number one, B one and two, which are my sponsored items.
All right, motion?
Second.
Second? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, okay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, item B one is discussion with possible action to give employees a one-time payment as determined by city council. In addition to employees' regular pay in the month of December, co-sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Gutierrez, Councilmember Gilberto Gonzalez and Councilmember Vanessa Perez. Mayor, we've done this in the past where we give a one-time supplemental payment to employees in an effort of boosting employee morale and also to assist employees as we continue to attempt at increasing and bringing their salaries up to par. I'm thinking that staff has some proposals for us to see what the financial impact would be and I would like for us to review those before proposing any action.
Honorable mayor and council, Jesus is part with the budget department. We do have some numbers that we ran for this item. We have the one-time payment estimated cost as of December. So we ran, we have two thousand and six employees that are regular employees. This is excluding collective bargaining employees, contract employees. And we have two amounts in here that we ran. We have one-time payment of two hundred and we have one for two fifty. The city cost for the two hundred is five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. The impact to the general fund is two hundred and seventy-six, eight oh one. And then we have another option of two fifty. The city cost would be six hundred and sixty-one thousand, oh twenty-seven. And the general fund impact is three hundred and forty-six, zero, zero, one.
Mayor, may I be recognized for
Yes, go ahead.
Um, the question I want to ask was, I know we have more employees than two thousand and six. I'm assuming that two thousand and six are full-time employees?
Two thousand and six are the full-time employees, part-time and
But includes everybody?
Full-time excluding public collective bargaining employees.
Excluding collective bargaining employees, okay, that makes sense. Well, it's less than the number I had in mind. Do you have other information on your slide?
I have an additional slide that shows a breakdown for the general fund. Within general fund, we have a thousand fifty employees.
Okay.
And those are the two corresponding amounts for the two hundred and two fifty amount. The two hundred is a two seventy-six, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight oh one. And the two hundred and fifty is three hundred and forty-six thousand and one. We have some of the other departments, some of the bigger departments there are sewer, water. Water has two hundred and ten employees. Estimated cost for the two hundred dollars is fifty-five thousand, three sixty. The two fifty is sixty-nine thousand, two hundred. Sewer has hundred and eight and the corresponding, we have other corresponding departments in there, airport, bridge. We don't have this item, these amounts are not in our budget, approved budget. So this would be monies that the departments would have to find within their budget to fund it if we were to go with any of these two options.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So thank you for looking into those amounts. This is off of budget, right? So you have stated that we would have to, the city would have to go and find the funds, the enterprise funds would have to go and find unbudgeted amounts, unbudgeted monies to be able to direct to this effort. We did, we did bring this item up during the budget process and we decided that we would not give one-time payments to employees. We chose, at that time, we were discussing, it's a little bit different. We were discussing what we could do to recognize employees and we decided that we would approve a three percent COLA increase to their salaries. But I think the reason why we didn't wanna proceed with one-time payments during budget was that these costs do cost the city money. It's a significant amount. And now that we're out of budget, before, perhaps we could have budgeted for it, but now we're out of that cycle. I think the last time this came up was also right before an election year, so a couple of years ago. And I do not mean to suggest that that is the purpose of this at all. I'm worried about the perception of trying to give money, extra money to employees during, that it could be perceived as trying to influence the elections in the coming year. The other is that we just underwent a very extensive Siegel study and that was an attempt to try to to try to even out these disparities in income and make sure that everybody was getting a fair salary. That process, and I think Ms. Niente will agree, was a little rocky, but what management has done is open their doors so that any employee who was not made whole through that process could come and plead their case to management, and the city could make good in trying to make sure that every employee is treated fairly and is receiving adequate pay. And the last thing I'll say is that items like this deter the city's ability to look into merit-based raises, because this merit-based raise does incentivize good work and does recognize the, the efforts of people who, who put extra effort. That's the way I think we should approach it. I understand this is a little bit different, this sounds more like a Christmas bonus, but I worry about the perception, and more than anything, I worry about the fact that this is coming in the middle of our budget cycle and asking departments to find monies is just not fair. And, and I, and I'll, I'll defer to, to management to see how practical this is, but it, it just, I wish it would go through the normal budget process if we're going to do Christmas bonuses and then budget it in, so that we're not trying to grab monies and in this time when the sympathies are exactly for that.
Mayor Madge.
Yes, go ahead.
So I want to clarify, this is not a Christmas bonus, it is a one-time payment. I've always advocated, ever since I was elected, for one-time payments, and I've always been frowned upon, because some employees feel that they should be getting a percentage. I've always advocated for one-time payments. I feel that the employees merit this one-time payment. It's not because of it being political season, political season is not even here yet, I'm not even, I can't even seek reelection. So I don't do this for politics, I've always been out there, and those people in the room that have been here since I was elected know that I've always advocated for higher pay, for incentive payments. The next item that I have on the agenda reflects that as well. And perception is everything. Perception is, council members will get to work when it's time to run for reelection, and the three years prior to that, they won't do anything. Council members decide to have ribbon cuttings whenever the election comes up. Perception is everything we do each and every day. We are doing our duties, because we are elected officials, and unfortunately, that is a perception for everything we do every single day. Mr. Neb, what is your take on this? Can we afford it? Is it going to be something that management can address in finding the monies to make this happen if council were to make a motion and take action tonight? And do you see any benefit to this item as the city manager?
All right, Mayor, City Council, um, you know, the information that has been provided is there, the, the funding would, while it will come from the department, it's based upon what we consider as savings throughout, so there are positions that are not filled. There are, so there's, there's money that is generated over the years. The challenge we have with utilizing those savings is, is that then they're not there for the, the replacement in, toward the end of the year. In the conversation with budget, we believe that we can manage it, we can, it is sustainable for that, but you are giving up that, the potential funds that are associated with it. Can I say that any, anything we do for the employees is always helpful, but there's a lot of different ways to provide that recognition, provide those benefits to that. So, walking the line between all of that, we believe it can be done, if that is what you choose to do, just be aware that we are giving up certain savings, like I think Councilmember Torres said, we have done it in the past as well, too. So I think most of you would understand that the, the, the tightrope that you walk with that in order to make sure that there's funds to do the future things that you need to do as well, too.
May I follow up, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So I, I think it's unfair, Mr. Neb, to say that giving this incentive, or any incentive, would hinder the future of unfilled positions, because if I understand correctly, we'd be using what we call payroll savings for the months that the positions haven't been filled from the beginning of the fiscal year to when we disburse the payment. Right, so it won't hinder us hiring someone for, let's say, the water conservation position that Mr. Garcia just mentioned, just to clarify, if we were to give an incentive tonight, it wouldn't hinder the hiring of that person that council shouldn't have been hired, we're using the money saved between October the first and December as a cumulative to make this happen.
Mayor and, Mayor and City Council, I apologize for the use of the word hinder, right? It's, it's not for the future positions, but those savings do a lot of different things, is what I was trying to make sure that everybody understood. We believe there, there, there is a, the opportu, we're, we're, we're okay if, if you were to provide that, that, that benefit for that one-time, one-time, we can make it work.
I'd like to make a motion that we provide a one-time payment of $250 to all employees as described by staff that would be qualifying to 2007 employees, or six, whatever it was. And that we have special meetings in order for the disbursement of that payment to happen in the month of December.
Second. All right, motion? Second. Go ahead.
Would this possibly be able to be including the 27 administrative employees of El Metro? The non, the non-member?
If possible, I'll accept your amendment.
Would you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Motion is admitted.
To include El Metro employees.
Yes.
The 27 administrative?
Go ahead.
I have one last comment. So I, I do believe that this just, this process is not a budget process, right? This is just, someone decides we want to give money to employees during the month of December, where Christmas also happens to be a holiday, but I just, it, it says all employees, so we are considered as employees, and we got wrapped into this with the pension issue, right?
That was our coordinates.
We couldn't separate ourselves, and I was in here for all of this discussion, so forgive me if I am meshing the, the details of it, but here it says employees, and there, we, we should not be voting for a bonus for ourselves.
We can't, it's unlawful.
If, if I may, Mayor, we do have a notation in the bottom, this is for all active, regular employees in good standing, excluding contract employees, which in, in one case, for the transit, and all collective bargaining employees. And this includes part-time employees would receive half of the amount, though, because they're working less.
So, how do... I, I apologize, it, it's that clarification, how are we excluded if we are considered employees? We had this discussion, we went round and round, and perhaps legal could give some clarification, because we couldn't separate ourselves from the pension without impacting all of the City of Laredo employees. So how are we now able to make that separation for something like this, where we are considered employees?
You know, Mayor, this is a discretionary supplemental COLA one-time payment, and with that, you can separate and identify who you are going to make that payment to.
Mayor, may I add to that real quick?
Go ahead.
I think that what's more important here, Mr. Glenn, is that our salaries are governed by ordinance, and if we wanted to give council members a one-time payment or incentive, it has to be an ordinance. Once it's passed, it wouldn't apply to anyone that's here, it would be for future councils, but our pay is differently governed than employees' pay.
It would conflict with the previous...
Correct, so it doesn't apply to us, because our, because our, because our pay is governed through ordinance, and employees' pay is not.
All right, Council, one.
Mr. Neb, if this made financial sense, why isn't this coming from yourself to council? Why, why do we get put in this position?
I, Mayor and Council, I, I believe that, you know, council has the prerogative to put forward a, a lot of items. We, we have not.
But we did discuss this during budget.
All right.
And what happens to merit-based...
Mayor, can I answer that question to Council?
I would, I'd like to hear from our management team about merit-based raises and...
It's a lot longer conversation on merit, merit-based increases and such. We have, uh, Mayor, Council, uh, you know, we just recently have restarted our employee evaluation process. I am a proponent of not tying employee performance to merit pay, because the performance is separate from, from the pay. The performance should be based upon their ability to do the job and do the job well. In a governmental structure, merit pay is very difficult to implement because of the, of the nature of everything that we, that we do, and, and the process that we have. We have not found a good process in order to maintain the merit pay without a more subjective decision-making that happens in it. If we could keep it objective, merit pay would make a lot of sense. The challenge is that we don't have an objective system, it's more of a subjective one, which means that we keep the performance outside of the pay. And so it would always be my recommendation, the, the evaluations, the performance and all of that is based upon, are they doing their job or not? Then, then the pay is essentially separate. There's two things that we will raise pay for, you can say, I guess you could consider that annual increases in the pay is a good thing, or the cost of living adjustments, and that's, that's when you change the scale based upon inflation. Those are the two ways. Then you fall upon the recognition process in order to provide the employees with the ability to understand how important they are within the system. It's not all based upon money. Money helps make the world go around, but it is not all based upon that, it's the value of what we provide to that job. So, happy to look at, at a merit system, but I've never been able to find one with 42 different departments as to keeping it in an objective manner as to determine what that value is for that merit.
If I could further expand on Mr. Neb's words, I don't know if Councilmember Cigarroa was here, and you may have not been here, we tried merit pay, I proposed merit pay, merit increases, and it created more problems than helped us. We had employees grieving and complaining that because of their relationship with a specific supervisor, the supervisor would take it out on them and their merit instead of being what they felt was what they deserved was less, and that favoritism took a role, and I think that's what Mr. Neb is saying, it's, it's very subjective, and it's been proven to not really work. In an ideal system, in an ideal world, it would work, but we're all human beings, and there's always that wedge, right, that gets in the middle, and not everyone's satisfied. So it's either do it for everybody or you don't, has been something that public administrators have researched tremendously, and there's really not a perfect way of compensating someone based on merit because of a subjectiveness, right? So we've tried it once, it didn't work, it created more problems for the city than we, than the benefit we thought it would bring. I would be all for merit pay. I think that employees should be rewarded based on how they deliver their duties and based on their attendance, and we made, I believe, I'm sure, I don't know if Linda was with HR at that time, but I know Mr. Kettlewus, who's here from HR, and there was different categories, punctuality, attendance, I think there was even peer evaluations for directors and stuff, and it created a big problem more than it helped us. So we've been down that road, and that's the comment I wanted to make when I said if I could answer the question. We've tried it, and it did not work, doesn't mean we can't try it again, maybe we should for one-time payments next year, and leave that as an incentive, and have it based on merit, and maybe Mr. Neb can bring something else based on all the expertise that he's brought to the city, but it's been proven not to work.
All right.
I have, I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
As the city manager of the city, at what point do you bring an item like this to council rather than us at any point throughout the year? Because I could bring this item in the new year.
Yes.
And so on.
Mayor and City Council, I, I, in the broadest sense, I would always recommend to run it through the budget cycle, and either put the money into the budget for these purposes or, or to have it there. The, I guess our, our system doesn't always recognize that manner, but it's always better to have it budgeted so that there is no negative impact to the budget, because what we're hoping to get done is all that work that we have planned to do. The challenge is, is that we rely heavily upon our employees to get that work done, therefore, that's, that's that other side of the equation on that. And so, in, in my mind, I believe we should have this conversation at budget time in order to ensure for all future opportunities for that.
So that leaves me to ask my colleagues, at what point do we respect the process?
All right. Okay, thank you. Did you have something, Council? Okay, all right.
Yes, I, um, just going on with, I wanted to see if we're able to zone request that if we are not considered employees, and I know Councilmember Torres was trying to explain the difference, but we get back to when are we employees and when we are not employees, and if it's not going through the regular budget cycle, it needs to be an ordinance for all employees, but again, we couldn't separate ourselves from the pension, is that, does something like this give you an opportunity to explore how we can finally separate ourselves from that?
Well, sure, I mean, as far as the pension, there, there's, you know, the rules and policies and laws that were outside of the city, that's why we couldn't separate. Under TMRS, you know, if you're half-time and you're, you're considered an employee, whereas here, you're defined an employee, and there is this separate ordinance that regulates your, your pay, and, and just by passing this and calling yourself an employee would, would be in contravention of others, so that there, there's no way to reconcile. So that's why in this case, you're not an employee if you're passing this, so.
Well, I, I will, again, I will second Councilmember Elisa Cigarroa's reservations, because this is, this does exist outside of our normal budget process, and it just, it's irresponsible, in my opinion, to have this expenditure without having planned for it. Thank you.
Mayor, I wanted to make one more comment.
Go ahead.
And I, this will be a question for Mr. Esparza or for payroll or, or finance. Could we separate, if the motion were to pass, the one-time payment from the employee's salary, so that the taxation of the, what the employee gets to take home is not as elevated for certain employees?
The, and...
In other words, do it in an off payroll or payday?
The, when we pay, as per IRS guidelines, for the payment itself or from IRS purposes, is considered wages, regardless if it's a, a one-time or a COLA increase. So from, from the IRS, when we do a supplemental amount like this, this is a supplemental payment that is done, it is taxed at a supplemental rate, which is 25%. So that will, that will have to...
Automatic.
Automatic, and then you have the social security that comes, kicks in as well in there.
All right, okay. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, let's start vote. Motion passes. Motion passes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my next item is item B2, and it's discussion with possible action to offer eligible employees for retirement, an incentive buyout, and any other matters incident thereto. This item is also something that was proposed in the past, and it helped us save on, I guess, personal costs. So I'd like to make a motion to have staff come back with three different options for a buyout, since we do have time, this is something that I envisioned, we work on prior to, hopefully in the, by no later than March or April, to give employees an opportunity to think about retirement if they would want to opt into that. And I would want the report to come back to council, so that we can consider any possible action at that time to include the cost, if we were to do a 25% buyout, a 30%, which is what we did about three years ago, and a 50%, 35?
Was it 35, Mayor and Council, Linda, then the Human Resources Director? It was a 35% buyout the last go-round. I can, I have a small presentation for you, if you want to see it.
We can see it, but my motion would be a 25, a 35, and a 50% to include an option of two split payments, so that it could be a less impact on our end and also help any employee if indeed, you know, we were to want to move... on our end and also help any employee if indeed, you know, we were to want to move forward with this, and we see the numbers, and to include the potential savings so that my colleagues can also see what the savings would be if employees were to opt into the retirement.
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, we have a short presentation. Open.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We did take a look at this, council members and mayor, at the retirement incentive program. Let's, let's talk about a brief history. You're correct, sir. In twenty eighteen, the city did do a buyout, a retirement incentive. There were two hundred and sixty eligible employees eligible to participate. Of the two hundred and sixty eligible employees, thirty-two percent or eighty-three of those employees participated in the program. At that time, council had established a criteria. The criteria would be your service plus age equals seventy-five years, and you had to have been eligible by October first of twenty eighteen of that year. Employees were also not eligible for rehire after five years every time, so they had to wait another five years. Actually, twenty twenty-three is going to put them at that five-year mark. There was a one-time thirty-five percent lump sum payout of, for, of the base pay, which cost the city one point five million dollars. And then it also paid out the annual leave, sick, sick leave, and compensatory time lump sum payment at a cost of a million dollars. It excluded the collective bargaining employees at this time. So for today's current assumptions right now is what we have. So with the current criteria, in order for an employee to retire from the city of Laredo, they must be employed with the city of Laredo with twenty years of service with TMRS at any age or five years of service at age sixty. That's the criteria for a regular employee to retire. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we have about two hundred and seventy-five eligible employees that are eligible to retire at this point. If we assumed in the last go-round, there was a thirty-two percent employee participation, if we assume even fifty percent of those employees participate, there will be a hundred and thirty-eight employees that could participate at a cost of three point seven million dollars. Paying out the annual leave, sick leave, and compensatory time lump sum payment, there would be a cost of three point eight million dollars estimated. And again, we're excluding collective bargaining employees. Points to consider, well, if we do something, a program as such, the loss of experience, the expertise and the institutional knowledge that, that we lose in this type of programming. If we do it immediate, the succession planning challenges that we have, and what you're wanting to do is find a replacement for those key positions within the organization, and that's where we have the vacuum of loss of knowledge. The challenges in filling, filling those high technical positions. Right now, we are in an employee market, meaning that the employees really are choosing where they want to work. The employers are having a difficult time maintaining those employees. It's a different workforce that we're working and we're challenged with at this point. We are also, there's a potential loss in skillset, you know? Even if it is one of our heavy, heavy equipment operators or plumber, we lose that skillset within our organization. And finally, for, there is a direct and indirect cost to filling new positions, which approximates to about forty percent of that salary. That's what it costs the city to bring on those employees. It has been done in the past, you're correct. It's been five years, and it would be something that we could look at if this is a wish of the council.
Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Nepp, there you, one, two, three, five negative points to consider. What are the advantages of a...
The advantages, well, if we look at the cost savings, we, we would need to take a look at what would that cost savings be in taking even the, the direct and indirect cost? And then the challenges would be that potentially what it should have done is produce a savings to the operations of the organization. The other advantages is that you hire a younger workforce that is more in tune to what the current operations of the industries are. If it's in HR, if it's in engineering, what are the, whatever other industry we're looking at within municipalities, you're looking at the young workforce that's really coming with different ideas. That's one of the biggest challenges, I think the biggest assets in doing something like this, a program as such.
Mr. Nepp, I know that when we hired you as city manager, you made reference to similar programs that you activated in your previous, in the previous city that you were city manager at. What were the, I guess, the pluses that you saw in something like this?
Mayor, City Council, you know, it was right at COVID as well, too. And I mean, that, that was the intent of, of implementing this program is that as the, as the revenue dropped significantly during COVID, it was, where do we, where do we find the funds in order to pay for, pay for our employees? So when we did our, when we did our buyouts, we, we released fifty-six employees at a cost, we, at a cost of two point five million, we saved eight hundred thousand over because we did not replace those positions right away. In, in this case, when we talk about taking our higher earners within a, a specific grade and releasing them out, then we, most of these positions we need to replace. And so there'll be, we hope that they'll be at a lower rate and everything, but, but I think you lose the institutional knowledge and you work through that. But the idea is to provide that ability there, and I, I think the, the request out of Councilmember Torres, we can, we can put together a better worksheet that shows what those, what, what it looks like it's going to happen. We, we anticipate that we, we will probably rehire what we talked about today. We would probably rehire at a midpoint within the grade scale, not a, not the, not the, not at the beginning or not at the end, but it would probably be somewhere in the middle on the average, which means that the saving, it reduces the amount of savings, right? If we bring in somebody totally new, that's just new into the field, but there's that, that curve of learning what to do with the jobs are those challenges. But I think the idea is that, the, the idea is to kind of tighten that up. We do have seventy-one employees that are off our scale for one reason or another, which means they're paid more than the maximum. So we're spending on those employees, we're paying actually more than what we would for that job based upon what the industry says for the minimum maximum. So there are some benefits for that. I, I think that having that program available and, and understood is probably, it's, it's a really good thing. As to whether or not you want to implement it, I think we should have a longer conversation on that.
So my understanding is usually, like you were saying, this program comes forward when there is a need to reduce our budget. And notwithstanding the demands that council places on you for off-budget items, do we have right now a budget-driven reason to offer employees incentives to retire? Because it, it, I, it doesn't sound as if they exist at this point in time. So understanding the pressure perhaps from a few employees who are earning a little bit more than the wage scale would generally indicate, is this a program to implement and not then get eaten by people who will take it, not, I don't want to say take advantage, that is not the point. The point is the loss of skillset, the forty percent that we need to reinvest to get those people up to speed, and the fact that we already, we have departments that do not have enough people utilities that need a certain skillset. And so will we, how much will we suffer if we're letting go of people who could train the, the positions that we need to fill? So if, if there is not a good reason to engage in this process at this point, I don't understand where the pressures are. And if, as Councilmember Elisa Cigarroa was mentioning, this is something that generally comes from management when we are facing a budget crisis or a need in our budget, and management has seen the need and comes forward with ideas on how we can make ourselves more robust in, for our financial situation so that the city's departments can continue to work like they need to. So my, my confusion is why it's coming up if you're not identifying any demand for it and, and you've got these, the, the need to maintain a skillset within our departments. That would be my concern for moving forward with this item.
Councilmember Perez, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So one of the concerns I have here is, I think it's a good idea for us to have a program like this in place, but I do think we should tie it to our succession plan. I think that we need to kind of figure out a way to transfer that knowledge that would be leaving us to keep it within the departments. But I do think it is beneficial for us to, you know, there's some people that are hitting retirement, they're getting close to retirement, and they're just kind of like want to, you know, wait and wait it out, but, you know, you're not necessarily getting that movement that you would from somebody coming fresh in their career, looking to kind of like start. And, and, and I think that there's a way to balance this, but of course, it would all be driven with the needs of the city. I think we are stagnant in some areas. We could have a position filled, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're getting maximum performance from that. I mean, I can, I can tell you some frustrations that I've had, and I've communicated that with our city manager as per, you know, directive of charter, discussing personnel issues with, with our city manager, and I've noticed it. And there is a need for, for, for some of this, but at the same time, we have a lot of employees that, all, all of our employees are valuable to us, and we don't want to lose any of them. But some of them may be considering, you know, moving on or have other aspirations, want to leave Laredo, want to retire, spend more time with their grandkids, whatever their case may be, life choices that for whatever reason they're holding off on retirement, that something like this would help, but I think we should tie succession and knowledge transference into the program so that we kind of mitigate some of the after effects. So it would be nice to see a slide with benefits and not just negative things.
Your pro-tenor, City Council. Yeah, thank you for that as well, too. As a, as a precursor as to where we're headed, in January, we'll be presenting an employee management system to you. We've been, we've been preparing that for a while. It's to answer all the questions that started with the implementation of the Siegel Study and how we're going to walk through the process. I truly believe that employees like to remove the uncertainty from their jobs overall. And so the, I think, so the idea is to give you a whole management system as to how we will work through every situation that we, that we deal with. I think Councilmember Torres asking us to put together a package, we can add that to that list as well, too, and have that for you to consider as far as whether or not it needed, needs to be implemented or not. I think we have, we have a number of positions still open, and so we, we will look at that a lot harder and heavier. My understanding is currently the averages of filling one slot is forty percent of that salary. So if we lose a position, we have to, it, it costs us about forty percent to refill that position. And so we want to be very strategic in our, in our decision-making with that. But I would like to bring you together a full plan because we want to, we want to try to wrap up the, the department heads and all the positions, all the way from city manager all the way down to our, our frontline employees.
And if I may also add, Councilmember, we are working on a succession plan with management, and it is for those key positions as, you know, who is going to be next to fill those key positions. So there is a plan that we're working on that we'd like to present at a latter date here. So we're, we're trying to get us there.
Councilmember Torres? Yeah, Mayor Protem, all I wanted to say was, I think that any opportunity we have to save money, we jump on it, right? And this is long-term planning. And the last time we did this was five years ago, and, I mean, we lost people from management all the way to custodians, and we were able to move forward even though, you know, research shows that there's all these potential constraints. Here we are, you know, still operating this city and the savings, I know that it's never been, I don't know if it's been calculated or not, but if it can, let's see what that savings has been. I know that with salary adjustments, maybe it's not a, a very fair scale to go back to, and maybe that number may not be as big as it was, but I want to see what was it that we saved from the five-year buyout, five years ago, that buyout to present date, not taking into account, right, the actual increases that we've given, to see what is the actual savings that we saw in the long run, right? And essentially, there was that big promise of savings, and that is why we jumped on it, right? And I also think that, thinking that fifty percent of the employees as an estimation, I think might scare us by seeing three point eight million dollars, I think thirty-five percent would probably be the response, the same as last time. And then at the same time, I probably suggest that we do this on a first-come, first-served basis like we did last time and have a cod of date so that if someone's really considering and doing this, if council wishes to move forward with it and the city manager sees the benefit, then we're able to entice employees to take advantage of this incentive. And it's also our way of thanking them for their loyalty to the city, right? Like Councilmember Protem Gutierrez mentioned, a lot of employees are hanging on because of insurance or hanging on for whatever other reason, and that also saves us on our insurance premiums and our costs, right? Because employees that are ready or eligible for retirement are up there in age and are costing our insurance more and drive up our liabilities. And last time, we heard from a lot of employees saying, I've been wanting to retire, but I'm not doing it because of insurance purposes, but now with this buyout, I'm able to afford insurance at a Cobra for five years before I hit Medicare or Medicaid, whatever it is, right? So the incentive helps them and it helps us immediately and in the long run, so.
Councilmember King?
Yeah. Echoing a little bit what Councilmember Pettis said, like, I, I wasn't aware, so these, these valid incentives, the word incentives there for a reason, right? So the idea is to stop these, you know, the people who want to retire are not really invested in like being at the city anymore, they're just here because they have to be. But are these incentives always just one-time, like limited timeframe? They're, it's never like an ongoing program or...
Well, it's not an ongoing program. It was done five years ago, and I think prior to then, maybe in the early two thousand, there was another, there was another period there. And Councilmember Torres is correct. My data shows when the employees are exiting, they do not leave because they cannot afford the medical insurance, and they stick around for that. And that is the reality that we see with our employees.
Yeah, because other things, when you have young people coming into the city, they might leave the city because they see that there's, you know, assistant director, directors there that are just going to be there for eternity, so they don't see, you know, a way to grow in the city. So, I mean, it's, I don't know. I would, I would agree, just echo the idea of seeing some, some of the other pros at the...
Though, Councilman King, we are changing it. We're bringing back our leadership program, our CPM. We just graduated another class today. So we are doing some programming there to incentivize those young generations, I call them the diamonds in the rough, for them to be our next leaders and the next generation of our workforce. So we are doing a form of employee enhancement programs. We do want those employees to get engaged and get involved, and we've just seen them do presentations, and they're thinking outside of the box. So they're going to be great leaders in this organization in about a couple of years, as long as we keep developing those employees. We're bringing other trains to the organization to enhance our workforce as well. So we're going to work on this.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
So you did mention the forty percent cost. That is in addition to the, the regular salary. That is, it's a one-time cost, but it would be about forty percent of their salary that must be dedicated to onboarding them essentially.
Right. So when we do the recruitment, the interviewings, the backgrounds, the drug and alcohol test, all of that piece, it's about forty percent of the salary is what it costs the city, and it's indirect and direct cost to the city. So it's averaging about forty percent.
Right. And then the other is that would this be easier to implement during the regular budget process so that, because you're talking about millions of dollars and adding that to the, the existing city budget when it was not a budgeted item? So does it, should it wait to the regular budget process to begin to consider this type of program and being able to offer these incentives?
Mayor and, Mayor and Council, I can answer that a little bit. It takes a while to prepare these types of programs. And so if you wait till the budget to prepare for it, because at budget time, we're crunching numbers. That's not the time to prepare any of these programs. You put them in, you put them in place, you trigger them when they make the most sense to what we're trying to accomplish. So I, I kind of walk in that tight rope right there, right? Because we want to build into the budget because if we can build it in, I mean, you saw some of the impacts of that. There, there is a savings in there as well, too. At least, we hope there is, otherwise, we probably shouldn't do it. And, and, but it's not, we've not fleshed it completely out as to what that looks like. I think it's, it's always good to have the conversation on the budget, but if you're going to put together a program that you want to make sure that it's going to do what you want it to do, and those conversations have to happen before the budget happens, so.
All right. Okay. All for the question?
May I ask to repeat the motion?
Can you repeat the motion, please? Councilmember Perez.
It's a motion to come back within three months with different options, twenty-five, thirty-five, fifty percent, and also have a two-payment split option, and also to indicate the potential savings.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Next item.
Do we have anything else pending? That we brought up? Motion for the approval of the minutes, number six, twenty twenty-three.
Motion second. We're starting over. Vote. Terry's already said it. Vote.
Motion.
We're waiting for the vote.
These types of things, can we just raise our hands?
Yeah. Motion to approve the appointments, committee commissions, boards and committees.
Second.
Motion second. Vote. There's more? Motion open public comment. I'm sorry, do we take, do we vote on this?
We're voting.
There it is. Motion, do we have, motion for public comments? Do we have public comments? Motion to open the public comments. Motion second. In favor? Aye. Motion passed.
Mayor, city council members, I do have two citizens' comments. Um, they're not on any particular item. The first one comes from Arturo Garcia and it reads, "It has been refreshing to see downtown weekend evenings with a very visible presence by our city police since our new chief has taken the reins. This has been a long needed as our developing entertainment district continues to grow. The small team of downtown police have been doing a good job with limited personnel and resources, but it's time to address the visible growth and potential safety issues of the entertainment district. Police visibility is crucial in deterring potential negative issues from occurring. I support the increased visibility by the police chief. It definitely makes visitors and locals feel safer as the, as these comments have been expressed to me personally when talking with people taking part in downtown entertainment activities and events. I would just remind the council that one department cannot do it alone. The focus needs to continue with the other city departments being coordinated together with these efforts such as routinely checking streetlights that are out, causing dark areas for walking pedestrians, trimming trees, continued parking modernization improvements, spray wash sidewalks weekly to reduce urine smell, address the twenty-five-year vacant downtown property the city owns at eight oh two grand and find use for it, and also develop more viable and business-friendly guidelines for economic development to incentivize and initiate business growth downtown. These efforts need to be coordinated from the top to top-down for continued success. I sincerely wish the council and city management team much success in this effort as this will mean success, uh, success for our community with a revitalized and vibrant downtown." The next comment is from Rolando Lopez and it reads, "Every year for the last twenty-two years, I have asked every council member of District Eight and mayor why they will not allow budget movies to be part of the Plaza Theater's future use. This year was no exception. In fact, I have been asked, I have been asking this question to sitting District Eight council member and the mayor since the day they were elected. It will not surprise anyone that neither responds. After twenty-two years, I may sound like a broken record, but does, but so does the use of reprogram funds meant for low to moderate income families being used to benefit the wealthy. Attention is now focused on senior council member Albert Torres, who must take the lead on fair proportional use of the Plaza Theater. The council should all, as well reconsider the Plaza Theater's future. Similar to withdrawing support for the Bruny Plaza Children's Library Museum, it should now rein in the reckless spending associated with the Plaza Theater. Furthermore, both cigar rolls in the council should abstain from further direction made regarding the Plaza Theater due to their close-knit relationship with Abel City. The Plaza Theater was purchased using federal dollars in nineteen ninety-eight. Planning committees have nev- have never once considered benefit for low-income families other than to attempt to satisfy the national objective. The multipurpose facility being talked up by the District Eight is a renewed attempt to extract retribution for a defeat referendum voters rejected in two thousand eighteen. The following quote is from a November sixth, two thousand eighteen K G N S News report by Brenda Camacho. The voters have spoken and it looks as though Proposition B has not passed. The proposition would have allowed the city of Laredo to finance a new convention center in downtown Laredo right next to La Pasada Hotel. Where, where then is the respect of voters so essentially defended is a recent contested city council election. But the point of my public, uh, public comment is not much about elections as it is about the moral obligation of strict adherence to political etiquette, particularly when addressing the needs of constituents, have no voice, much less political clout. What's more, if District Eight is evicting downtown businesses whose roots go back to the original mercado of the early nineteen hundreds, I must ask, where is the Webb County Heritage Foundation, where to is the Laredo Convention and Visitors Bureau? Because the last time I checked, historical tourism is as big as Texas. Downtown Laredo does not need a live performance venue at the Plaza Theater. What it needs is affordable family entertainment and affordable quality of life opportunity for the elderly and disabled who have sub-zero options. Millions were spent on the outlets and before that, millions were spent on El Portal in the same city as the outlets. As today, millions are being spent on the Plaza Theater, including the millions of dollars that were reprogrammed from a previously city council-approved children library museum at Bruny Plaza. Reprogram Bruny Plaza renovation funding for unnecessary bells and whistles for the Plaza Theater. Reprogram funding, just like the reprogramed C D B G funding used to buy the theater twenty-five years earlier. The difference here is that the reprogramed children's library museum funds were, were the balance of the remain, um, from the sale of the Laredo Civic Center.
Thank you. Motion open to public hearings went through nine. Motion? Second. Is a vote? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Vote. Motion passes.
Number one, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance appropriate revenues and expenditures in the amount of three million eight hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four airport operation fund and authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents to the city of Laredo and the Texas Department of Transportation to effect the conveyance service only of a seven point four nine eight track acre tract as a right-of-way for the extension of U S Highway fifty-nine with a fair market value of three mil, three million eight hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. Said tract is legally described as a parcel of land located in the Doña Maria, Herdude Sanchez, Portion number twenty-seven, abstract two eighty-four, and in the name of Jane Geiman survey number seventeen fourteen, abstract five seventeen, Webb County, Texas, being out of the certain one thousand two hundred forty-nine point twenty-three acre tract conveyed from the United States of America to the city of Laredo in an indenture executed February twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-five, recorded in volume four seventy-eight at page four seventy-one, deed of records of Webb County, Texas, provide for severability, providing for an effective date. Number two, public hearing, providing community residents an opportunity to comment on the twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three consolidated annual performance and evaluation report prepared by the Department of Community Development, which identifies the activities undertaken by the city of Laredo and participating nonprofit organizations and agencies in support of the city's housing and non-housing strategies and the objectives outlined in the twenty twenty-two annual consolidation plan. Noted the accomplishments achieved through the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, as well as the C D B G and E S G coronavirus grant funds. The report is available for public comment beginning December fourth, twenty twenty-three and ending at five P M on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Copies of the report are available in the office of City Secretary located at City Hall eleven ten Houston Street at the Department of Community Development located at thirteen one Fairview Third Floor, East Wing, Monday through Friday, eight A M to five P M. And copy is also available at the Laredo Public Library located at eleven twenty East Carlton Road during the hours of operation on the city's website at H T T P S, uh, W W dot cityoflaredo dot com slash department slash community development. The public may provide comment via the public hearing by visiting the offices of the Community Development Department and/or via email to C D comments at C I dot Laredo dot T X dot U S. Number three, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance authorizing city manager to amend the city of Laredo twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four detoxification department's full-time equivalent posting listing by creating two new positions and one licensed chemical dependency counselor, two oh eight, and one counselor interim, two oh eight. Funding for the F T E is available to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. The performance period is October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Number four, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance authorizing city manager to accept and execute a grant order by the Texas Department of Wildlife Department for the amount of one million three hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and thirty with a fifty percent match of six hundred fifty-six thousand and sixty-five. And in the city of Laredo's fiscal year twenty twenty-four annual budget for the environmental services fund by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of one million one hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight local matches available in twenty fifteen C O and the environmental services fund, funds will be used for the River Bend Trails project. Number five, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance authorizing city manager to accept and enter to a contract with Texas Department of South State Health Services and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand for the total amount of two million one hundred ninety-five thousand with no match for the city of Laredo Health Department, Public Health Workforce Grant for the term period of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Number six, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance and ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending chapter two, article two, division one, section two dash sixteen, departments of the city of the code of ordinances by establishing a newly internal audit office as the department and abolishing the existing internal audit division of the city manager, transferring all functions from the existing internal audit division for the newly created department designated an internal auditor with supervised responsibilities over the department, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing what the ordinance shall be commutative, providing for severability clause and declaring an effective date. Number seven, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance amending article two of the chapter twenty-six police, the code of ordinances specifically section twenty-six dash twenty-seven fees and documents and services by adding a new subsection, A one, entitled online reports to authorize assessments and collection of the six-dollar fee for the release of electronic cases and incident report via an electronic portal, providing for publication and effective date. Number eight, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance authorizing city manager to execute an amendment to the content of the Lexus Nexus, to the contract with Lexus Nexus that provides an online police report distribution system. The system allows police reports to be secured via the internet. The amendment to the existing agreement makes available to an online citizen reporting system called Desk Officer Reporting System, enabling individual retail companies or the other organizations to file reports, create other, other forms online for all requests for the authorized request or the provider may charge a convenience plus a fee in the amount of six dollars on behalf of the police department for each copy requested through an online system. The term of the agreement shall commence upon the effective date and shall continue until terminated in accordance with the agreement. All revenues generated from this service contract will be deposited to the general fund allotted to the police department to offset technology fees. Number nine, public hearing instructed pre-ordnance authorizing city manager to execute an amendment to the contract with Lexus Nexus that provides an online police distribution system. This system allows police reports to be secured via the internet. The amendment to the existing agreement makes available solution called Lexus Nexus Request Report, which is a web-based solution that allows parties to request a report from law enforcement and permits law enforcement agencies to review, except rejecting distributed reports to their request or online. For all requests to the authorized request, the provider may charge a convenience fee plus a fee in the amount of six dollars on behalf of, of the police department for each report request through the online system. The term of the agreement shall commence upon the effective date and shall continue until terminated in accordance with the agreement. All revenues generated from this service contract will be deposited to the general fund allotted to the police department to offset technology fees.
Public hearing number one, man. Or against? Or against?
Or against.
Motion to close introduce?
Second.
Motion passes.
I'm gonna do one. Sorry.
Did we second? Yeah, we did. Yes, he seconded.
Go ahead and vote, please.
We haven't voted.
You need to vote, Mayor, on this one? I think I hit your button. Everybody in favor?
Mayor can vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Then we go on those. I'm finished anyways.
There you go.
Motion passes.
Simple enough.
Mayor, mayor, motion to do the rest of the public hearings with him, hand vote?
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. Number two? Number two, for against? For against? For against?
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So I, uh, I actually looked up this, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, CAPR, prepared by the Department of Community Development, and it was a little difficult to find because on the website, it's not, it's just put on there as twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And so I was just wondering, um, thank you, Ms. Martinez, if perhaps there could be a little bit more clarification or make it easier to see on the website and then also to include it in a social media post. So I did put it out on my social media, um, but I think you would get a little bit more feedback. And the, the other thing I'll say is that it's, it's not, it's not an easy report to read. I don't know if.
It's a lengthy report. Sorry, Tina Martinez, Community Development Director. It is a lengthy report. Um, there is, uh, paper copies available at the library or in my office, but it is a requirement asked per HUD. Um, it is very lengthy on the questions that are being asked and all the attachments that are being requested from our Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I don't know if there is a easier way to provide the information to the public, if there's a way to summarize. I, um, I just, I under, we're asking for the public's input and yet we're asking them to read something that is very difficult to understand.
We can definitely put together like an executive summary to make it better, uh, bullet points.
What, what do they call it when it's F Y I or the, um?
Synopsis, maybe?
The talking, no, talking points, right?
Yes.
You know, just the highlights and then have it be whatever, highlighting whatever big proposals you think they should know in front of it. And that way you're still providing the entire report, but maybe it'll make some sense to people.
Yes, we can definitely work on that and especially I'll work on, uh, P I O, with P I O to put some sort of media, um, you know, advisory out and, and, and maybe make it a little bit more user-friendly.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay. I voted out. Number three, for or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Second. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number, uh, four? For or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number five, for or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Motion passes. Number six, for or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number seven, for or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number eight, for or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Motion passes. Number nine, for or against? For or against? For or against? Motion to close introduce? Motion second, all in favor? Motion passes. Number ten, for or again? That's it? Okay. Motion of, of the final reading of ordinances? Ten through? Sixteen, wait, 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 the final reading of final ordinances. Ten through sixteen and adopt. Wait, final reading, adopt. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Motion over to the consent agenda, seventeen through?
If we could take out forty-six?
Forty-six? Through fifty-six? Anyone needs to pull in? Nineteen? Yes, sir. With exclusion of eighteen, we've already done that one. Nineteen and forty? Six, forty-six. Motion? Yes. We have a motion. Motion? Fifty-five. It's only fifty-five.
You're second.
You're second? Your second? Okay, motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do you have questions on the?
Uh, yes, um, just explain the, the, the plan. Um, I know a lot of discussions been made between how we're gonna do the, the Washington DC trip this coming winter, spring and March, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I guess my main question is how we're going to make sure we're in sync with some of our partners, uh, such as the Laredo Chamber of Commerce, such as Laredo Economic Development Corporation. They go at the same time. Sometimes we have these meetings and there's, you know, thirty people in a single room. We talked about it before. Um, and it ends up being a non, not as productive meeting. But I, I do feel that we do share a lot of goals with the Chamber and the L E D C, so. Um, and I do sit on the L E D C thanks to the mayor's appointment and I get almost every meeting consternation from, you know, from the board members, not, not, not the presidency, talking about the other volunteer board members, very frustrated, um, with the city's lack of cooperation. Um, and you know, sure, our, our goals are not always gonna align, but there are a lot of times when they do and there's a little, the people on that board have, carry a ton of expertise. They have a lot of contacts. I don't think we should be excluding them. And I'm sure the city, the management side is gonna say that you're not excluding them. But I would argue we need to be pro, more proactive in including them. Um, so that's, and it's not exclusive just to those two organizations or our other partners like the Rio Grande International State Center, they go as well. There's other private sector people. It's just, um, you know, obviously we're there to represent the city. The city's number, we're, our fiduciary responsibility to the city. But we also, I just feel that we shouldn't, um, just kinda have it as a second, third or fourth thought with our partners and we should kinda be coming together a little bit better, yeah.
Okay, so very good points. Um, Karen Copa Rubia, City Manager's Office. Just so you know, I also have, um, Hans Rikoff from, um, Aiken Gump, our lobbyist on the line too, if you guys have additional questions. A lot of the feedback that you just brought up was brought up last year. We hadn't gone to DC in probably since two thousand and twenty. Um, so this year, if you look at our agenda, it was structured quite differently and that was for a few reasons. To help us kind of plan those meetings and conversations for when we go to DC. Um, and as you'll see on the agenda, on the legislative priorities.
Remind me where the agenda is?
It should be there, but let me pull them up here.
Nineteen. The, the, the DC trip.
So this year, um, we're going with, with a new strategy of breaking down our points and not necessarily putting every single project and specific, you know, um, priority on the list, but creating themes. And within these themes, um, we will be creating, you could say, working groups with city staff and our shareholders to be prepared starting now, once it gets approved and say, how do, um, the priorities of the Chamber or of the E D C, how do they work together with what we also are going for? And so the goal is to have us working together as a group to start preparing for those meetings. Uh, Miriam Castillo from Economic Development has already been having those conversations with them. So they are aware that our agenda is going to work a bit differently with the goal to be more prepared as one group when we go to those city meetings that Aiken Gump is helping us with.
Okay.
Hans, I don't know if you have anything else?
Uh, mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question on the nearshoring. Uh, I don't see anything about the nearshoring trend. Who's gonna? At what point are we gonna discuss that? Because that's really gonna significantly change our community. And we need help with that. And the government, federal, state, local, all of us need to be on board with that. And I don't see nearshoring as a priority here.
So we can work to either put it here under one of the topics, but we do have a running list of those like priorities that you guys have brought up that are part of the strategic sessions, uh, specific projects that were worked into those priorities and those will be the talking points for when we go into our meetings.
Yep, mayor.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yes, not, this is not a priority that we're necessarily bringing up. This is like a environmental, outside of our control type of movement that's happening that it really shouldn't be up to us to bring up. It should be something that everybody understands is happening to our community. And if, it's very difficult for us to push for something when we ourselves aren't even on the same page. We had the same talk last ti, last time when we had the legislative session agenda and we didn't have anything about Mines Road congestion on there. And it's, a nearshoring is a problem. And I think that's in and of itself, a whole meeting that needs to be had with officials at all levels when we go up there. Otherwise it's not gonna help. These little bullet points under infrastructure, none of those are as significant as that, in my opinion.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, and I apologize, I was looking for the item if, if I missed this or, or if you've already mentioned it, but you said that Miriam from, um, from Economic Development will be can organizing this or assisting. Are we, are we going to, are we going to be called and meet in small groups so that I think, uh, Councilmember Perez's point is an excellent one. And I do see it falling maybe under transportation and infrastructure or in the port of entry. But as she's saying, if we do not have information so that we can all be on the same page when we're discussing what these demands are in our, and the effects that we, the impacts that we will be feeling in our community and how we can advocate to mitigate those impacts. Um, it's, it's going to be an issue. We're not gonna be as, as effective. So will we have one-on-one meetings or, or small group meetings that we can be better informed?
Yes, hi, good evening. Miriam Castillo, Director for Economic Development. Yes, to answer your question, the idea is to, um, like Karen mentioned, and Karen and I have been working as well on some of the, and I, also by the directive of City Manager's Office on how we can be more proactive and the way we structure the agenda, not only the agenda, but the way we conduct the meetings once we're in Washington. Um, but yes, um, the idea is that, um, under these priorities, just like Karen mentioned, these are just the priorities or the topics that we will be um, addressing, but within each one of those categories, there's gonna be several items that are gonna derive from those priorities, whether it's grants, whether it's advocacy. Um, going back to the nearshoring topic, that's a, a, a topic that has been discussed with the private sector as well, particularly with the renegotiations of USMCA in two thousand and twenty-five and how we need to start advocating and looking at all the different aspects of the, the negotiations that may come to the table and how it will impact our, our region as well, whether it's environmental, whether it's policy, whether it's, because the nearshoring that it's coming to Mexico and particularly Nuevo Leon, when you talk about seventy percent of all the nearshoring that's coming to Mexico, it's coming to Nuevo Leon and the fact that we're sharing an international bridge, you know, we need to be aware of how that's gonna impact. And it's a topic that has been, you know, considered as well as part of the agenda.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
The concern I have is that we're diluting, we're diluting things. Like, I think this is a lot of bullet points and I understand that we have a lot of needs. But we don't, we don't need to dilute our conversations down. If we're sticking to the nearshoring trend, then that's gonna provide a sense of urgency for police, infrastructure, economic development. All, all the topics fall under, I think that in of itself, it is a topic that needs exploration. Grants, all these things, I understand, but I mean, we have like bridge expansions that are taking longer than usual because of federal policies. Those are the types of things. We have ethylene oxide. I don't see anything there about talking about air pollution. I don't see anything there talking about environmental concerns. I feel like whoever generated this list doesn't really fully understand like the needs of District Seven. And I had the same conversation last year when we went, so, um, please.
Mayor?
Mayor, I mean, City Manager, if whoever's in charge of this could be in tune with the needs of District Seven a little bit more, I would appreciate that because otherwise I'm gonna have to step in and, 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 you know, advocate more for the needs and it's very public what District Seven needs. And, and that's not just for my residents, but it's for like the trade corridor. It's for Laredo overall. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, uh, as, as we, as we prepared this, this is essentially the same format that Austin, San Antonio. It's a little bit broader format on the, on the, on the broader level points. We have, we have the, all the examples or all the projects that'll, that'll be shared as well too. Some of the, some of these items we put on there, I, the, the nearshoring, we might wanna put it as a bullet item because of that, the size and the breadth of what it is. But what we wanted to make sure that didn't happen was we didn't want to box ourselves into just we need money for X. Because if they're not able to get there, we wanted to keep it within that broad range because if they can offset something else, then we can put more of our resources to X. And so the idea was to follow a, a broader format that we could get behind. And then we, then we establish in our conversations those individual items. So this, this is what the larger cities have been utilizing and that's why I've been asking to go to this, this model because I think we need to keep it at that broader level and then pull it in as we get into those conversations farther. Um, the, the other piece is that the idea is to bring our stakeholders in, meet individually. But before we could get to that, I, I think that's why this is forward now is that we want you to approve the format of where we're at before we start bringing in our stakeholders so that we can have our what we wanna focus on definitively lined out. So if you're not ready to, um, do that now, I'm okay with that. We'll bring it back in January, but we wanted to start having those meetings and that doesn't mean that we can't amend this as we go, but the idea is to keep it at a broader level so that we can hit more of those marks that our legislators need or Congress needs in order to, to bring in additional funding.
Mayor, since our, since our lobbyists are on the line and I know we need to extend the meeting to eleven, just, actually, I'll do that. Motion to extend the meeting to eleven?
Second.
Motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's done. Okay, um, so I know the lobbyist on the line and I just, uh, and I'll say, I would say last year, our DC trip was, I felt more confident about how that went uh, than the, than the Austin trip. There was a lot of room for improvement as well. Thank you for making some of these changes, adopting some of the, but you know, it, it won't, as you know, I know, you know, this Minister Man, uh, Mandar, it's just copying and pasting San Antonio's. We won't be able to implement it if we don't practice and prepare. So I would highly recommend that we get together and like play it out, like do, you know, pretend you're, you're talking to someone and actually, um, like get ready for this because like these people have thirty seconds sometimes of their attention span and you're done. You're out. We're the number one port, but we're still one of a lot of different people coming in their office. So we need to be ready. We need to have talking points. And last year, I got asked to go to several meetings uh, last minute that because, you know, someone else couldn't make it, which is fine, but I wanna be handed the talking points so I can at least have that and have a specific ask tied to a specific piece of legislation, not us coming in with our hands out saying, give us money, please, because that means nothing to these people. They need to hear a vehicle. They want to hear a vehicle. What is a vehicle? A vehicle is a piece of legislation that can carry what you're asking for to the finish line. So our lobbyists, I know you're listening, we need the vehicles. We need exactly how we get what we want and we need relevant talking points that gets people's attention along with us telling our stories because we all know stories um, really resonate with lawmakers. But I just wanna make sure we maximize this time, we go in there and, um, and we make an impression, but we also ask for very, very specific things. Thank you.
Mayor and Councilmember, uh, yes, I, we agree and, and I think that was the intent was to get those, we wanna make sure that the right team is in the room. Uh, it, it, I don't think numbers really count. It's gotta be the right people for what the topic is. And I also know that because of the, the, the size of Washington DC, crossing from one end to the other is very difficult. So we have to make sure that we, we, we don't overwhelm our teams because we were running from spot to spot and we don't wanna be late. So. I agree.
I do think that Hans on the line wanted to say something, if you can give him a few minutes, so.
Well, well, thank you, Karen, and, and thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. I, I think, um, I think most of what I wanna say has gone over. Again, just to, uh, to reiterate, uh, what the city manager and Karen have said, the design of the federal agenda was to be, um, inclusive of all of the potential, uh, priorities of the city, uh, both current and, and future. There are a lot of opportunities in Washington DC, more than we've probably seen, uh, in the last several decades in terms of funding opportunities. We wanted to keep the agenda flexible enough where you had the latitude to include those types of opportunities if they weren't specifically mentioned in the agenda. And council member, as you mentioned, um, you have a number of stakeholders that also come to Washington DC with a number of priorities as well. And we, we set these aside in terms of having umbrella kind of priority items, transportation, infrastructure, port of entry and border integrity, so on and so forth. Understanding that each one of those has specific, uh, items underneath it and totally agree. Separate and apart from this general federal legislative agenda, every single meeting in Washington DC needs to have a purpose. It needs to have a clean, crisp, uh, request of the legislator or of, uh, the senior executive that you're meeting with. And fully, uh, also understand that you guys have a number of people coming to Wa, Washington DC with a number of different and disparate, uh, types of requests and we wanna be responsive to all of those and inclusive of all those. This document again was just made so that the city has the flexibility to have all of those very specific requests within these different types of silos. But happy to answer any questions. And we also, uh, unfortunately are at the, um, um, the agenda of Washington DC as well, as we're currently moving into next calendar year. Uh, unfortunately, the Congress is not when it comes to funding, so those will all be the types of considerations when we think about those legislative asks that we're making when you come to Washington DC in March that, uh, we think about. But again, happy to answer any questions and thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. The reason why I bring up nearshoring is that every community is going to come to them and speak about issues that are gonna sound very similar to our issues. But nobody in the country is going through the, is going to, through the growth, growing pains like we are. I mean, we are the number one port in the country. No other city that's gonna go up there can have that title. And we need to capitalize on that title that we have. And we need to not talk about it as a bragging point, but as a point of urgency and concern that not just we should be concerned about locally, but the entire country because it's a supply chain issue. What? A border improvement for the borders and improvement for the country. That's the message that we need to go over there sending. We need to figure out what our message is and that's where I think it's good to have, again, the marketing department. We need good messaging, good focus, and we need to go over there with a message and we all need to be on the same page. It would be beneficial for all of us to get up to date with nearshoring, what the trend is, what the concerns are, the pain points that we're experiencing because if we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the resources, we're not gonna be able to handle all the trucks and all this, and all the movement that's gonna be coming through here in the next five years. It's said that Laredo traffic is going to double in five years and that's pretty scary. Uh, especially for those that already travel this trade corridor. So, um, this is not just a local issue. There was an article in the paper yesterday that said that the Mines Road is the second worst road in the country and it costs the state millions of dollars. That's what we need to be talking about when we go to Washington. Everything else is great and, you know, yeah, we can ask for money and hope that some dollars fall our way. But we need to go there with a sense of urgency and a clear message and get everybody on board that Laredo needs help and the, the help will trickle down to other things. That's my view and I think that's something we need to talk about.
Let's, let's come.
Go ahead.
If, and if the lobbyists on the phone can hear us and, and the directors that are scheduling this, um, also, it's, it seems like a good idea for us to prioritize executive branch meetings because there's trillions of dollars still of unspent money from, you know, bipartisan infrastructure plan and et cetera. That, that money hasn't even started really trickling out yet. So it'd be nice to be meeting, you know, with the people who are actually implementing, uh, the legislation from the last two years because we all know two thousand and twenty-four is an election year and very little is gonna get passed of, of significance. But over the last two years, uh, quite a bit's been passed and we need to make sure we're, um, meeting with the people who are actually gonna be implementing and doing, doing out that money. As you saw tonight, there are several times we were spending American Rescue Plan money from two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, so the idea is we need to be capitalizing on the money that was passed la, in last year in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, in, in those other big pieces. Um, so I just hope that we're focusing on the executive branch, almost more so than the legislative branch, because I don't really trust legislative branch is gonna be passing much of significance next year.
Mayor, in that spirit, I, I mean, I'd like to make a motion to approve contingent on some revisions and to bring it back to us at the next council meeting in January for us to uh, continue to reconsider this.
All right. Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Forty-six.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, really quick, if possible, I would like to, uh, make a motion to bring up my item, E one. Really quick, if possible, I would like to make a motion to bring up my item, E1. As it is, if approved, it's time sensitive, because the youth tournament would be this coming weekend.
Second, that motion. Okay. Motion second. As amended.
And, no, no, I just think we should finish the consent agenda.
Oh, well, then, I'm fine with just his, no, wait.
Okay. Motion, as amended?
As amended.
On favor?
Aye.
One second.
Motion, yes.
Okay.
Motion to extend the time to eleven PM?
We already did that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. So E1 is discussion with possible action to assist the weekend baseball league with a two-day baseball youth tournament and any other matters incident thereto. And Coach, we know the director from the weekend league is LPD officer, Mr. Luis Becerra. And he reached out because he's, he did this for Thanksgiving, and he had a great outcome of forty teams bringing teams from Zapata and Hebronville. And now he wants to actually do it again. But and this time, it would be, the teams would provide toys as gifts for the needy kids and throughout Laredo. So any questions you might have, any suggestions, Coach, on this tournament? We're targeting all youth. It's ages starting from, I would say, five to twelve years of age.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. J. Gomez Parks Director for the record. As Councilman Gonzalez was mentioning, a gentleman is a police officer. He has a weekend league tournament here. One of his goals is a lot of kids don't be able, not able to travel on weekends. As with select ball, as everybody knows, it's big now in all over the, all over the state and the nation. So what he does is he makes local tournaments here so that the kids can play here locally instead of having to travel out of town. So the last tournament he had in Thanksgiving, early, before Thanksgiving, I'm sorry, was he had kids from ages six all the way up to high school. And the fields that he was used, is requesting is Independence Park, the two fields, the Freddie Benavides Park, the high school baseball field, and then the four, I'm sorry, the three, Dryden Park field. So there's a total of six fields that he's using on Saturday and a total of six field that he's using on Sunday. From eight to six to eight, high school, which is eighteen.
And that would all depend on how many teams he get as per how the weather is this weekend.
That's correct. That's correct, Council. Just to kind of give you nervous, I guess, if you want to, just to go on the, so it will be six hundred dollars per day for the use of the fields, for all fields. And if he uses a concession stand, it'll be a hundred dollars per site, so a total of nine hundred dollars per day. If you use it for Saturday and Sunday, it'll be a total of nine hundred, which is eighteen hundred dollars for the weekend. And all this, all this will be brought in for, I think it's Toys for Tots?
Yeah.
Councilman, is that correct?
I believe so. He had it last year, so I just don't know.
Right.
I wasn't here.
So that's the information on that tournament that Councilman Gonzalez is asking.
Yes, go ahead.
So we're just being asked to waive the fees essentially, just waive the fees? And are there five oh one C three nonprofits eligible for that?
He is not, not, he is not a nonprofit, Councilman, he's not a nonprofit, he...
But they're benefiting, they're collecting for Toys for Tots?
That's correct.
Those are five oh one C.
Right.
So we're just waiving the fees, right, council members? Is that...
That's correct.
Mayor, may?
Go ahead.
Mr. Gómez, is, is there any indication or Councilman Gonzalez perhaps, you know, is there any money made during this tournament?
For, as far as for...
For the, for the tournament overall, is there, are there fees that are collected? Whether they be, I'm not mentioning the toys. But I mean, are there fees that are given to this police officer in running the tournament?
From us, Councilman, I'm sorry, or just, like, does he, does he charge the team?
If he's not a nonprofit, and that's usually the standard that we have.
Right, right. So normally, I'm sorry, so, so normally what we do is, people that are not with the leagues is we, we charge them a hundred dollars per field, all right, a hundred fifty dollars with the deposit. Once they pay, they can charge the teams, except fifty dollars for the tournament, seventy-five dollars for the tournament. And it's fine with this, because he's already paid us, he's already paid the use of the fields. He's already paid for the use of the field, not compared to...
I hate to interrupt, and perhaps some clarification, what is the ask?
What is the what?
What is the ask? What are we being asked to support?
Other than just, if I'm not mistaken, just the, just the, the waiving of the fee as far as for, from...
Okay, so it is waiving all the fees?
Yeah. As far as us, we don't do anything. We just turn the lights on and that's all we do. We don't, there's no, there's no employees working the tournament or anything like that.
So does this gentleman receive funds from this tournament? Is there a way to know?
I, I'm not gonna, I don't know that answer, Councilman, I know he's collecting toys, that's part of the entry fee. I would have to, I would have to reach out to him and ask him, Councilman Gonzalez, unless you know the answer.
No, I'm not sure. And we would ask him, would he have charged to anything to coordinate the entire tournament for umpires and stuff?
Right, I know the umpires, the teams pay for it.
Yeah.
So they call it pay at the plate. For every game, the teams pay twenty dollars for the umpires. So, so that's part of their, part of the tournament that they, that they pay. They pay at the plate. So, but do they, to answer your question, Councilman, does he get a fee from each team? I would not, I would not, I wouldn't know that answer right now.
So is it usual requirement that we waive fees for nonprofits? Is that the usual? What is our policy?
So, I mean, like, we're coming to the council, normally, for example, I'm going to use Pony. So Pony comes up and they use, they ask for our, for the use of the fields with, with, with no charge. And, and we also give them, city employees to help them with the fields and all that. So that's, that's, but Pony is the city, is a nonprofit. It is a nonprofit.
So it is, so is our, what is our standard operating procedure?
For nonprofit?
For, for waiving fees for the use of our fields.
So they will normally, they will normally come up to a, we don't, we don't waive the field. Nobody can, nobody can have access to waive the field, I mean, as far as waiving the fees, I'm sorry. So the organization comes up, as we're bringing now, as they come, and they ask for you all to use, to waive the fields, to waive the fields of the field.
I guess that a different question is, do we have a standard operating procedure?
Yes, ma'am.
For this request?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there guidelines?
Yes, ma'am, yes, we do.
What are the guidelines?
Okay, so the guidelines is, if they wanted, if they, if they're a nonprofit, they come and they give us their, their, their five oh one C and all that. Then, but we do not have the, we do not have the authority to not to waive the fees from them. They have to come up, they give us the information, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna go Pony again. Then they come up to you all and ask you not to, for to waive the fees. Now, if they're using, if they're using the fees as a league, then we don't charge them because that's part of a contract that we're going with them, if that makes sense.
This is not clear. I, I apologize if somebody understands. Do we have a general policy for someone who's not a nonprofit to be able to get the fees waived?
Do we have a, for somebody that's nonprofit, no, we don't, well...
The policy is we do not waive fees if you are not a nonprofit.
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct. But again, if Pony is a nonprofit, they come and they fill out, and then they come and tell you all.
But this is not that case, right? This is not a nonprofit requesting the waiving of fees. And additionally, we can't make the determination whether this gentleman is actually going to collect any money.
Right. At this moment, I would not be able to answer that question for you, ma'am.
So, I'm sorry, so this hasn't been done before, or...
Acting against policy, I wouldn't want to do that.
And which way, Councilman?
That we waive fees for a tournament for a nonprofit organization.
Yes, has it been done before? Yes, for a nonprofit organization, yes.
And what about for, for... All right. Let's see, let's not speak at the same time. Who's, Dr. King?
This is way too confusing. This is not a nonprofit.
That's correct.
This is a gentleman who wants to get his fees waived.
Correct.
To host a baseball tournament.
That's correct.
In, to benefit a nonprofit, and if it's exclusively to raise toys, that's okay, I think. I'm comfortable voting for that. But if the gentleman is going to be making money himself personally.
Right.
I'm not okay with approving that. Okay, I think that would be a bad use of public, waiving of public fees. So if it's just exclusively so that we can get some toys to needy kids, I'm all for it.
With no entry fee.
But if there's going to be an entry fee where this gentleman's making cash off of the city.
Right.
And waiving, I'm not okay with that.
Okay.
Mayor, may?
Mayor?
Go ahead. Let's see who's next.
Just, just one thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just want to, yeah, reiterate that point. Councilmember Gonzalez, I think this is, it's excellent that you want to help this initiative. Because I do think that the youth are going to benefit from this, this league and having this game. I know you're very passionate about baseball, and I think this is a good opportunity. I think we're all on board with using of the fields on those days. I think we're fine with that. I think the only issue is that if we're going to be supplementing taxpayer monies into this, that we would expect that it go into like a quality of life issue. And we would, we would not want the public to be charged fees for, for profit. So if there's fees because umpires need to be paid, or there's fees because something needs to be paid, there needs to be kind of like a, like a zero, you know, expenses and, and income match, like just like any regular nonprofit. I think we can move forward with the request and work out all those details afterwards. But as far as like us just approving and supplementing or waiving fees for, you know, private initiatives, I think that's where we kind of, as a council and just in the best interest of public policy, need to kind of draw that line. And I think we do have policies in place. So using of the field, holding the tournament is all good. Just making sure that nobody's profiting. And if there's fees collected, that they're going for expenses, especially since we're all supplementing it and sponsoring it. That's my...
Go ahead, Council.
Mayor, just one thing. Can we just approve this contingent upon him not making a profit off of it? That's pretty much what everybody's seeing here and saying here. If he's continuing not to make anything, if, if something should be, of course, to another nonprofit, Salvation Army, Toys for Tots, donation that way. Can we, can we put that in there? Would you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Contingent upon?
Okay.
I have a question.
I think it was, uh...
I'm next, so the key.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So I think that the easiest solution to this would be to just have Toys for Tots make the request and have them submit. And whatever fees are collected, have Toys for Tots pay the fees to the umpires. And if there's money left over, then Toys for Tots keeps it. So I think we should approve it contingent to having a representative from Toys for Tots submitting their five oh one C three tax ID number and have the gentleman work alongside them for the process. And if they're going to collect fees, since it is a nonprofit, have Toys for Tots collect the fees, have them pay the umpires, have them pay whatever waters or whatever needs to be purchased. And let's do it through Toys for Tots and have the gentleman work alongside them and get it done. So if you accept that as an amendment, I think that would be the best way to make doing it through the nonprofit.
So you use, use the Toys for Tots five oh one C?
Correct. Through a representative, right? And have the gentleman work alongside the representative to ensure that if there's fees to be collected, then the fees are collected through the nonprofit organization, have the nonprofit pay for the fees and have the toys benefit the children. And if there's a fee that's collected and there's money left over, then that's something that the nonprofit keeps, which is no different than any other nonprofit using our facility to make money, right? Because nonprofits have to make money to be able to deliver their mission and vision, so.
All right, go ahead.
So there is no enforcement mechanism for this idea. I agree that we need to make sure it's a nonprofit tournament. But there is no way to force Toys for Tots to run a baseball tournament. And that's essentially what this, what this request or motion would be. So I wanted to look to legal to see if this motion is workable and enforceable. Because it doesn't sound as if there is a meaningful enforcement mechanism to ensure that a private individual is not profiting from the waiving of public fees.
Or just have them not, not collect from the teams?
At all?
We just have to confirm that, that your restrictions are, are going to be complied with as far as not being profitable. That's the, that's the enforcement side of it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Was it... Based on your motion to ensure that, even though this is a for-profit organization, that no profits can be gained personally for this event, we just have to be able to, to confirm that before complying with this.
It's, it's going to be cash basis for some of it, I imagine. So who is going to be in charge of enforcing this motion? That's my question.
That's why I'm saying, let, let there not be cash involved, let him not collect at all an entry fee.
Councilman?
Look, it's very simple. The question was, is there a mechanism in place to ensure that private individuals do not benefit from a fee waiver? And the answer is yes. The mechanism in place is that if you're not a nonprofit organization, you get nothing waived.
That's correct.
Even if council wants to do that, I'm sure there's a policy ordinance that doesn't allow any private individual unless you provide a five oh one C three number, like you do for baseball leagues or soccer leagues in order to get fees waived. So the answer is yes, there is a mechanism. If you want to have a private interest in having tournaments or leagues to make a profit, you are more than welcome to lease or rent our fields, but you pay the fee.
Yes, pay, right.
And the mechanism in place is if you don't provide a five oh one C three ID number, you don't get anything waived. So in this case, a solution to this issue is have the nonprofit organization follow the paperwork and contingent to a nonprofit organization entering to an MOU agreement with the, with the city, the fees will be waived. If the gentleman cannot find a five oh one C three to get this done, the fees are not waived. End of story. We're going in circles. That's a solution to this.
And we would have to pay.
So a mechanism is in place.
Okay. Motion, is that a motion?
Are you okay with that motion? That's my motion, there's a second.
Mayor, yes. So just one last question. Why is it coming up to council? If there is already operating, standard operating procedures to allow a five oh one C three to run a tournament, why do you need our approval for this tournament? Why wouldn't the internal policies that Parks and Rec have allow it to proceed under guidelines that allow a nonprofit to run a tournament?
Because it doesn't. It comes as to make that through, for action.
Yeah, the council owner was the one that brought it up.
May I answer that question, Mayor?
Go ahead and answer your question, please.
So the answer to that question is even a nonprofit would have to pay. In order to get a fee waived, it takes council action or the signature of the city manager. That's why it's an item on the agenda.
Right.
All right. Call for the question. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring up my item, C three, just because we're running out of time. And I just need it to get considered for move, to move forward.
Second. Motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, C three.
Discussion with possible action to amend the City of Laredo Land Development Code to prohibit industrial development within five hundred feet of a school, park, or place where children congregate to require traffic impact studies and the consideration of approval of industrial plats whose use would affect these sensitive areas and any other matters incident thereto.
Second.
Motion, second.
So it needs to start the process of getting through, you know, going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, going through hearings and all that. So I just want to kickstart that process tonight. And then we still have a chance to review whatever's brought to us. This wouldn't be the final approval. But just asking council action to get this started. We have a lot of industrial development in my area, and, and, you know, we had something similar in District Four come up. I think schools, if you look under M one and industrial use in the land development code, there's certain things that can be done, except by a school, or except by a park, or except by a church. There's some, there's, there's, I think we need, there's some room for improvement there. So that's all I'm asking for council to initiate today.
Orlando Navarro, for the record, yes, we can do that. And then we'll also get with legal. So if there's any definitions that we need to add to this, so that we can add the definitions for certain things that come out in here, we can do that too.
The only thing is, I see here is five hundred feet. I would ask that maybe we consider something between five hundred to a thousand feet to have some, some options. As an option to the changes. Would you accept that amendment, Councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mayor, that's it on this?
As amended.
So motion is amended.
That's it.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Forty-six, Mayor. Forty-six.
Consideration to approve a supply service contract with Park Place Recreation Design San Antonio, Texas in the total amount of three hundred thousand dollars and to further authorize future-related expenditures for the purchase and installation of playground equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department. This annual contract shall utilize a buyboard cooperative purchasing contract program. The term of this contract shall be for a period of one year, beginning as of the date of its execution. Funding for this contract is available in the general fund, Parks Department, and in district priority funds. I just wanted to know, Mr. Gómez, how much, if this is a yearly contract, how much money is generally... how much money is generally spent on a yearly basis? Is it the complete three hundred thousand and it zeros out and?
Yes, ma'am, uh, good evening, J.J. Gomez, yes, ma'am, uh, Mayor, uh, 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 City Council. So the contract last year was three hundred and fifty thousand, we brought it down to three hundred thousand. We, it timed out already, right now we approximately about a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we've used so far from from this company. So it's timed out, but we always use this like to buy benches or or whenever we whenever we need to.
I apologize, what does timed out mean?
Uh, the contract, the contract expired December of sixth, is that correct? You can help me uh on on more precise date.
While while that's happening, Mayor, um, you mentioned district priority funds, which district priority funds?
No, it's from the general fund, uh, Dr., it's from the from the.
Okay, that's a typo. Like any of our districts?
Or any district, if you wanna, is it general funds or any, if you wanna have a a something that you wanna buy from for your district, you can buy a bench whatever from the district priority.
Three hundred thousand dollar open P O.
Right, that's pretty good.
Honorable Councilmembers and Mayor Enrique Dávila for the Purchasing Division. Uh, as far as timed out means, uh, we approved a contract last year, December third or fourth last year. So we decided to go again, bring this back, so you can approve.
And if I understood correctly, Mr. Gomez, then you've only spent, you only spent a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the last contract.
That's correct.
But that is finished and done, it closes, and then you open a new one.
That's correct.
Do you expect your expenditures to perhaps get to three hundred thousand this time around? Because it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars difference.
No, no, ma'am, we just try to go over a little bit, and we try to lock in the price also as well, is that correct? We try to lock in the prices that they give us. Uh but we don't, we don't expect this, we always kind of wanna go over just in case something happens, I mean, a little bit, so that's why we actually brought it down fifty thousand.
So when you say lock in the price, that means any any of the um eligible playground equipment is set as at a set price because it falls under this contract?
That's correct.
Does it prevent um an expenditure of funds outside of this company if that were to come up? Are we tied to this one manufacturer?
No, 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 we have no three or four other companies that we work with as well, that's right.
And then, so it is, that that is the scope of what is available for expenditures for park equipment?
That's, that's correct, yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mayor, I think that in a nutshell, if I may briefly, it's just what we call an open P O.
That's correct.
It doesn't mean we're gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars, it just allows us to spend up to. And it's not an um an encumbrance of funding, right? Is if anyone needs playground um equipment replacement or new purchases, each respective district priority fund would be tapped into to pay for whatever is ordered on an as-needed basis.
That's correct.
Right, so for lack of better words, it doesn't, it's not a timed out, but rather an expired contract that y'all are bringing for reconsideration.
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Motion passes. Next. Fifty-five.
Just considered consideration to approve a contract with Corin Maine LP San San Antonio, Texas in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one ninety cents for maintenance for the advanced metering um infrastructure, automatic meter reading equipment and hosting software services. Um I just had a couple of questions uh recording this item. Um, how many, how many do we have currently that are not functioning meters? Do you, do we know?
Right now, all the meters are installed or are functioning.
Okay, across Laredo?
Yes.
And um, but do they, are they read manually or do you have some?
Well, early we had uh collectors that we are installing that we're trying to bring back up. That's the reason uh we need to have the software available so that we can do reading. Some are handheld reading, depending on the areas that we are where we didn't have good reception. But those that we are automatically reading, those are being picked up. Sometimes we have issues where the antennas are broken or cut, and we have to go in there and replace them.
So is it like a majority, I'm just curious, is it a majority of Laredo or?
Different areas, different situations, you know, sometimes traffic drives over them or there's obstruction or there's construction in the area and they get damaged.
Okay, well, this is, great, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Garcia, for the maintenance, so this is just, uh, cause you were talking about several things and and collectors? Could you explain?
There's data collectors that are set up that we, cause uh Corin Maine, they're going through, Neptune is going through a revision on some of the software, so we have to get up to date with some of that hardware. So that's some of the system that's not part of this, but what we're getting here is the service for the software that we use for billing and reading of these meters.
And is, so is this seventy-seven thousand on an as-needed basis or is this for the whole year they're gonna go through everything?
This is for the whole year.
And so it'll depend on where the need is that it'll be sent out?
It's part of the uh software maintenance that they provide us, and that's the contract they're on.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item? Fifty-seven, staff report, internal auditor. Fifty-seven.
Motion to approve the office report.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fifty-eight?
Glad you didn't get to sit down.
Fifty-eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Fifty-eight.
I'll try to be quick and brief. Uh, this is our water conservation quality report for today. For the record, I'm Thor Garcia, Police Director. Uh, we're still in stage two. And currently, we're at, uh, Amistad is at twenty-six point eight percent. Uh, just so that you're aware, currently, we're at a hundred and five days, last year, we were at ninety-one days at stage two. So uh, Amistad is dropping about a tenth of a percent per day. So hopefully, we're supposed to have a wet winter, that'll help out to where we can improve. But just to let you know, uh residuals are currently being maintained. Uh, just recently, I also received a letter from T C Q regarding all the violations that we had in the past. We pretty much are in order, so I'm hoping soon to be reporting to you that we are applying for the superior water quality. And they'll come in and do an assessment of our system so that we can be designated for superior water quality. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
We only have six minutes.
Okay.
One.
So, Amistad, um, do you know if the, if part of the issue is a leakage in the system? And if you don't know, could we ask I B W C to report on the status of Amistad? Whether we need to be a little bit more concerned, it's not just, perhaps it's not just a water supply, but it actually has to do with the integrity of this co- collection system that we have?
Yeah, part of it is what I B W C has, I can get that report and bring that and also follow up with I B W C. And uh, once we, I present that information, present what the conditions of Amistad, because there is some work pending on Amistad.
Do, will the State of Texas be contributing to that project?
I don't know those details, but I'll, as I get more information, I can provide that to you.
So what we heard from Commissioner Giner, who is the commissioner of the International Boundaries and Water Commission, um, was that perhaps there was a problem with the integrity of the reservoir. And so if that is an issue, then we need to perhaps look into advocating along with other communities along the border. What we need to do to press the State of Texas to come in and and begin to give us some solutions because this, you, Amistad is our water source. And so this is beyond the scope of what we think about when we worry about the Rio Grande and its capacity to serve us. Um, if the reservoir is not working or functioning or losing water through that means, we are, our timeline has just shortened dramatically for that secondary water source. Um, and and I would urge us, we would need to take some type of action to draw attention if the state is not doing so already. So uh the report is incredibly important.
I think those trips to Washington, D.C. to make this Amistad the priority because it is.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Critical points.
Uh, uh, Ms. Garcia, could could you add that to the list, please?
Water.
All right.
Mayor?
Motion to recess as the Laredo City Council and convene as the Laredo Mass Transit Board?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone else? No?
Excited?
No.
Motion passes. Oh, motion passes, sorry.
Motion to.
Motion to adjourn as the.
Motion to adjourn as the Laredo Mass Transit Board and reconvene as the Laredo City Council.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, we are on item C one, um, I'm gonna motion to table item C one and C two for the next council meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I, I motion to do the same for D one.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion adjourn.
No, there's one more.
Sorry. Not yet. I'll do the favor, G two, I'll motion to table as well.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody else? Everybody, okay, motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas, everybody.